Need to go.
All right, it is a couple of minutes after six o'clock, Wednesday, April 6th. My pleasure to call to order the meeting of the Freeport Planning Board. Thanks to the folks, it's nice to see a few faces in the audience tonight in person. It's been a little while, we had what, two last time? Without any further ado, item number one, informational exchange as usual, and I believe number one, or one A, is the introduction of two new board members. We are pleased to welcome two new members tonight for their first meetings, although I know at least in Andy's case, far from his first planning board meeting. But maybe first one on this side of the table, so. So yeah, welcome to both, to both Andy and Mitch. Okay, names good with, yeah, first names, short names. Item number two, Caroline, you have an update on the downtown Freeport vision plan?
Sure, so before we, before I tell you that, just a couple of housekeeping things. Rosemary was excused from tonight's meeting.
Yes, correct.
So the first thing before we start, if all board members can turn on their microphone, there should be the button and the green light should be on. Good, Robert shows on. On preference, try again. Preference would be that you leave them on. It's really hard on Zoom to hear if you start turning them on enough and forget. And then the second thing is we are doing a hybrid meeting tonight. We've only had one of these, we have a few more people on tonight. So just remember that when we do open the public hearing, there's a little bit of delay. So we'll have the conversation in the room. We bring over the people on Zoom, but we need to wait a second so that we can get the volume on, so just keep that in mind. But back to the real number two, you should have gotten in your packet, and we would want to extend this to the public, an invitation to the downtown Freeport Vision Planning. There's an open house coming up this Saturday from 11:00 to 2:00. The hope is that we'll be outside and have an in-person. Joyce, don't tell me it's gonna rain. We'll have an in-person event, which I think is pretty exciting, because we haven't had one of those in a while, if it rains, which it looks like it might, will be inside. So the downtown vision project's been going on for over a year to create a vision for downtown Freeport. There's been a series of surveys, a downtown walk, a set of public meetings. We just finished a design week, and you may have noticed all the renderings out in the hallway. Those are all the ideas that have kind of come from our community so far that Principal Group, our consultant, has put on paper so that we can react to it. Well, as a result of Design Week, they've further fine-tuned the ideas, and there's a few more ideas they want to hear from the public. So we're hoping to get a lot of people at the open house for one last chance to give some in-person feedback, and then they are then gonna produce the draft of the plan for a public review, and it should be going to the council for a final review and possible acceptance in May. So we hope that everyone can attend. There's flyers on the counter with information to RSVP. If you forget or can't RSVP, please by all means stop by, it should be a good day, and we're hoping to get a lot of people there. And then, number three, update on the annual workshop with the town council. Sam, do you want to give an update on that? You were Robert since you were there for that.
Sure, we, mind, Robert, fine. Okay, we met briefly with the town council. We have an annual workshop with the town council, just a few minutes to kind of update them on what we are working on. We talked a little bit about cannabis, which is, you know, the next, or one of the next big items the board will be taking on. So I think, you know, aside from reiterating the council's long-held position that they are opposed to retail cannabis in town, they were excited to see what we come up with as far as regulating cultivation with, with new land use ordinances in town, new guidance. And then, the other, the other thing we talked about is the comprehensive plan updating process and getting some additional resources allocated to, to that, to hire consultants to help us with that process so that, you know, staff and, and the board's time can be better spent, you know, out of the weeds, at least as much as possible. Inevitably, there'll be some weed whacking involved, but yeah, I think that was a pretty brief meeting, 15 minutes or so, so.
And then I had a number four. The only other thing I wanted to let you know, I don't know if you guys caught it last night, but at the council meeting last night, Speaker Ryan Fecto came to talk about a housing bill that's for consideration before the state. They had about an hour discussion on it, the bill in general, and what it is proposing for municipalities to look at for regulations to encourage affordable housing, additional units, and accessory dwelling units. So there was a good introduction with a PowerPoint, and then there were some more specific conversations as to what this would mean for Freeport. So if you weren't at the council meeting and didn't see it, I encourage you to watch that one hour. You can go online to video on demand and watch it on the town's website. I think you'll find it very informative, and if that is something that's adopted by the state, it would be something that will come before the planning board if we need to make changes to our land use regulations. So just wanted to give you a snapshot so you can all have the equal opportunity. Public can view that as well, it's a recorded meeting online. And that's all I have for info exchange tonight.
Item number two, the approval of minutes from the December 1st Planning Board meeting, way back in 2021, I believe. Robert, you were not there, and obviously our two new members were not there. That leaves Wayne, Anna, and me to.
Okay, so we will need to table that then until we have Rosemary to have a quorum of those present at the meeting.
Well, that's an easy one. We don't need to officially take, do we have to vote on a tape to table it?
No, you can just say you can't take action, and we'll put it on the next.
Take action.
Meeting.
Easy enough, all right. Item number three, the first of several public hearings tonight, the creation of a proposed shoreline zoning ordinance for the town of Freeport. New ordinance would be based on existing shoreline zoning regulations contained in the current zoning ordinance, which would be put into this new document. The language will be updated, or would then be updated, to comply with the minimum requirements of the State of Maine's Mandatory Shoreland Zoning Act. We've been talking about this for a long time, this is just the latest iteration, and we hope the last iteration, I think, is that fair to say?
Well, it's never done, as soon as we get it done, I'm sure there'll be a change.
There'll be something, but hopefully a big step forward tonight, so we don't have to keep spending Caroline's hard-earned time on this, so.
You want some?
Yeah, quick background, maybe before we open the public.
Yeah, I will give some background. So we do have Mike Morse, he's a consultant formerly with Morse Environmental Consulting. I'm not gonna pronounce the name of his new firm correctly, so I'm not even gonna attempt, I'll let him do that when we bring him over. So back in 2015, the State of Maine adopted shoreline zoning updates, and municipalities, we're supposed to update their ordinances to meet at least the minimum requirements. So we took our time as a community, and in 2019, we tried to update that language. The planning board had a public hearing, it got sent to DEP, and DEP said, nope, you need to change some more. So we had some staff changes and other things, so we hired Mike Morse, who used to actually work for DEP, come in and update the zoning ordinance, because all of our shoreline zoning was in the zoning ordinance. We then had a pandemic, and we didn't meet for a while, and then we had to get used to meeting online, and so it got further delayed. So back in September of 2021, we had a big public hearing to adopt the updated language that Mike had prepared. We made the recommendation, or the board made the recommendation, on the amendments to the zoning ordinance and the zoning map to the council. We did hear from some residents at this planning board process that, you know, we could use some clarity in our ordinance, whether it be for shoreline zoning or some other water issues, there's, you know, it's kind of a hot topic in Freeport. And when the council got to the public hearing, questions were raised as to the complexity of shoreline zoning, and how by having it intertwined, as Freeport has always done, in a 275-page document didn't appear to be the most user-friendly way. So essentially, what the plan was decided to do was to take an attempt at creating a standalone shoreline zoning ordinance, in hopes that it would be easier for people to understand, they could open the one document and have the standards there. So as far as content, with the exception of the coastal waters ordinance, which we'll get to later, the content is the same. So what we did to get this draft standalone ordinance before you tonight, which I will add, a lot of communities do it this way, is we took that same zoning ordinance that we talked about before, we deleted everything that wasn't tied into the shoreline zone, you know, standards throughout our zoning districts, parking centers, all that. We had just the shoreline standards left, and then we added to it as needed. Because it was standalone, we needed to add, you know, some basic thing like, what do you do if there's amendment, what is the applicability, some of the more formal, but we tried to keep the general layout, the formatting, and the base text, the existing ordinance that we've been used to working with. So before you tonight, you have a standalone shoreline zoning ordinance. I can give you just a quick, brief overview of what the changes mean to Freeport, and again, changes from what we had on the books to what we originally started updating back in 2019. So the first section you'll see is the definition section. It's pretty standard, most of those are shoreline zoning definitions, but again, because we were pulling it out for some things, we just had to duplicate some definitions that we already have in our zoning ordinance, just now you might find them in both documents. We have had some changes to the non-conformance section, we talked about this quite a bit at the last meeting, with non-conformant, well, non-conforming structures. DEP previously calculated expansion with regards to volume and, volume and square footage. In this case, the new language is gonna go by footprint, it gets rid of that volume calculation, and you might remember at the last meeting, Mike said the intent wasn't really to change the standard, but the intent was to make it easier for people to figure out. And the real water applicability, it does seem that getting rid of the volume calculation in going to the footprint is helping some people, and the details as to like how much you can expand, and again, we have Mike here, if you have detailed questions, kind of goes up as you get further from the water. Again, this was to be considered a simpler method to allow people to figure out what they can do for expansion. So we talked about definitions, non-conformance, we talked about the expansion, sorry, I'm just going through my notes here. We then get into kind of the bulk of the ordinance, the regulations, it outlines the districts and what they are, what we call them in Freeport, what they include. We have the table of land uses, that was from our old zoning ordinance that we moved over. We were missing some uses, and that did need to get updated. After the land use table, you then have all the land use standards that go along with any use in the shoreline, things that were updated, you know, lot coverage, there was a little bit of clarity, so that driveways are now included in lot coverage. There are some exemptions for lot coverage, boat launching facilities, naturally occurring ledge. We talked at the last meeting that there were concerns in Freeport for lot coverage. We added a provision at the meeting that that was something that you could go to the Board of Appeals for, and that, although it would be tough, we talked about that, that is still incorporated into that new language. There's some provisions for retaining walls. We did, as we talked about before, do some cleanup, we had to remove any reference to timber harvesting, so those have still been removed from this version. There's updates to the clearing of vegetation, specifically in the way you measure it or grid your calculation. The intent is that the new way of calculating at a different, its measurements will be easier for landowners, and there's a little bit different for how the point system is applied. There's some clarity on what's a storm damaged tree, and when you as a property owner can remove those trees, and there are some exemptions to removal of vegetation. There's new standards for some revegetation. Freeport has some standards for shoreline stabilization. There's some signage standards that we didn't have before, so we added those in. In the administration section, we did add a couple new things that have been on the books for a while, and we've been enforcing or using, but were in our ordinance. One of those is that any contractor in the shoreline zone needs to be certified by DEP and best management practices for erosion control, and also the requirement that you submit photographs before and after some clearing, and that's really just to have a clear paper trail for everyone of the before and after, and what occurred on the site. And then incorporated into this by reference would be some updates that if you go get a variance before the Board of Appeals, there's some specific requirements pertaining to those issued in the shoreline zone, and those by reference have been incorporated into this new version, and are also included in the zoning ordinance. So that's a really quick snapshot, I know it's really hard to summarize 60-plus pages in a short meeting, but I do have Mike here if you guys have questions. And as a reminder, this is a public hearing tonight, so you would need to open and close the public hearing and vote on those motions before you decide whether or not you're ready to take action on anything tonight.
Thank you, Caroline. Before we open the public hearing, there are any, well, first, thank you to Caroline and other staff, I'm sure Nick was involved, and Cecilia was involved in putting this all together, so thanks, I know this was a huge amount of work. Questions from the board, or thoughts, or is everybody just ready to get her done? Do I hear a motion to open the public hearing?
Removed.
In a second? All in favor? All right, public hearing is now open. Any members of the public wishing to address the board, please make your way to the lectern, which I believe has a mic? I can't.
Yes.
Oh yeah, there it is. And state your name, and.
Address?
Name, do you have to say your address? I just read the rules of order.
It's good practice.
And I think.
We have an online component too, are there people on?
There are, and people online, but you're gonna start with people in the room, Sam.
Yes, we will start, yes, sorry, yes, we will start with people in the room.
Sorry, I've never done, I've never spoken at a public hearing before.
Lots of people watch these.
I just realized I wasn't sharing the Zoom screen, so.
Great. My name is Alexis Grillo, and I'm here with my husband Bradley Grillo to support the passage of the proposed shoreline zoning changes. For the last three years, my husband and I have been pulling apart a dilapidated property on 41 Lower Mass Landing Road, board by board, and rebuilding it into our dream house. We started with the northern side of the structure, tearing out every scrap of material until the building was nearly hollow, no walls, no windows, no plumbing, no anything. We tore off the roof, which amounted to several tons of mossy asphalt shingles, rotten wood, and ripe insulation, and we cut long channels through the concrete foundation in order to replace the DWV pipes underneath. When there was nothing left but two-by-fours, we began to rebuild. Since then, we have redesigned and replaced nearly the entire physical structure and all of the utilities. We did 99% of the work ourselves, everything that we could do without a license, on our evenings and weekends, in between our full-time jobs, and while I also attended graduate school, and a quick shout-out to anybody else here who's maybe like a Muskee School grad. I'm not exaggerating when I say the last few years have been a tremendous amount of work, and we feel incredibly proud, proud in what we have accomplished so far. What we are building is really our dream house. The problem, however, is that we are only halfway done. A third of the house remains a mildewy shell wrapped in Tyvek with no utilities. We have no sheltered place to work or store tools and vehicles. We've packed what we can into a temporary boat shed, and it is filled to the brim. And although we've cleared most of the trash, leaves, and brush from our yard, it remains a muddy, torn-up construction zone. The root of our problem is that we designed our dream house on the new code, which we thought would pass several years ago. When it didn't change as expected, Nick Adams and Caroline reassured us, hang tight, they said, the changes are happening soon. Okay, we thought, we know how to keep ourselves busy, we refocused on areas we could rehabilitate under the current code. During this last three years, we've occasionally checked in with Nick and Caroline about the zoning, and their answer is always the same, hang tight. But it's hard to remain patient when our everyday reality is literally living in a half-completed construction project. We could compromise and build within the current code, but after three years of hard work, it's hard to stomach giving up our dream plans, especially when it continues to feel so tantalizingly close. We know that you're considering many different factors regarding the zoning change, and I hope that we can be one of them. As you are working on this, I want you to remember two things. First is that we are in limbo, and it is hard. And second, we are a crew of two, it's just my husband and I, and everything takes significantly longer. If we are to finish anything significant before next winter, we have to begin soon. So we please ask that you pass the zoning changes without further delay. Thank you.
Joyce Fahey from Islandview Lane down off of Flying Point. I think that I was one of those that suggested, along with some of the counselors, that the shoreline zoning be made its own ordinance, and I'd like to thank Caroline and her crew for what they have done. I think it's a lot easier for those of us that don't live by these documents every day, to read and to know what to do, so I think pulling it was a, was a wonderful idea. I do want to read something though, because I do my research, and I like looking into details, and I know that this ordinance was written from the DEP Chapter 1000, and the very second paragraph, it says, quote, "Municipalities need not adopt this guideline ordinance word for word. In fact, the Department of Environmental Protection encourages municipalities to consider local planning documents and other special location considerations, and to modify this ordinance into one that meets the needs of the particular communities." While I think that this document needs to be adopted tonight by this board and by the town council at their next meeting, because there are several families, like the one that was just here, that have been in limbo for so long because of COVID, because of whatever, because of the process taking so long, there are still several areas in here where I feel like the unique situations in Freeport were not considered, and that we took the language directly from Chapter 1000 of the DEP and did not modify it for our specific needs. A lot of the lots along the coast in Freeport are small. We have lots down our way that are 50-foot by 100-foot. And with the two sections in particular that I look at, is the non-vegetative surface, and also Section 306N3, that talks about what you can clear and what you can't clear. You make it impossible for us to even build a house, let alone expand a house. Section 306N3 on page 40 says, "You cannot clear more than 25% of the property." That includes your house, if you're going to have a porch, your driveway, your septic system, your well, everything is included in that 25%. And then you have the fire department that comes along and says you need to keep everything so far away from your house. And then you have the, the tree guy that comes and says, "And you need to have everything so far from the banking," because Freeport has 60-foot bankings in a lot of places, and if you put the trees too close, what happens? They grow big, they fall over, your banking goes away. So you've made it impossible for some people to really to build or to expand their house with the expanding family, and so although I know you are very tired of hearing about shoreline zoning, and you've worked on it for a long time, you're not done, and you need to continue looking at some of these.
Can I make a point of clarification here? So I think if I'm understanding your comments correctly, you're suggesting that the changes, the future changes, so first of all, you're suggesting that we, we pass this tonight, which I appreciate, and I think hopefully will happen, but the future changes that you're suggesting would be less, less strict, more lenient than the state standards, is that correct?
I think we need to fight for that.
But that's not something that this board can fight for, because there, there's a very clear standard that, and Caroline, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but my understanding is that the state sets out minimum, minimum standards, and it is not up to towns to make standards that are less restrictive to those. So the state sets the minimum, if we want to be more strict with our standards, we are free to do that, we are not free to go in the other direction. So while I appreciate your concerns, it's not, that's outside of this board's purview.
With all due respect, municipalities that wish to adopt a little bit different language.
But different language in one direction, not the other.
There are ways that you could change the language to say that you could clear 30 or 35% of your property, but your tree density would have to be this in order to meet the overall goal of having X amount of trees per 25 by 50-foot.
Yeah, that's maybe a question for Mike, I don't, I don't know.
Right now, that can't happen, and I have to respectfully disagree with you, sir, because it has to start somewhere. It starts with me standing here, and then it starts with you saying, hmm, maybe we do need to look at that, and then you come up with the verbiage and recommend it to the town council, and then we go to the town council, and then we go to the state. If somebody doesn't start the process, it never begins.
That, I think that's, that's true. I, I can relate to that, that the process has to start somewhere.
I'll come in as mediator and say, I think you're both right, and I honestly mean that. Yes, we are talking about the state minimums, there is some flexibility that you can make the unique, language unique to Freeport, like, there's some things that Freeport has been a little more strict on, that's making it unique, or like with Wordsmith, some stuff to have the same intent and the same goal, but to fit it in to our current ordinance. We did have a provision for non-conforming lots that it took like over a year, just give me a heads up on that, but our attorney did work with the Attorney General's Office because it was a situation unique to Freeport, where we had lots that were in the shoreline zone, but not actually fronting on the water, they were like on the other side, so we were able to get some language. I think we haven't gone to see if there's anything we can push, you know, if we're talking about lot coverage, we do have a, there's a variance option in there, we talked about the last meeting, a variance is very hard to meet. I think if we get this forward, and there's things, anytime you have a new ordinance, once you start to use it, you're gonna find things that work and don't work. So my guess is, this looks great today, although I forgot, I did give you a couple minor typos or clarifications, but we're probably gonna have to look at a little bit of cleanup. I think if things come out of the public hearing, that our community and our council feel like they want to know, we can at least ask the question and see if there's flexibility, and the answer might be no, but I think Joyce's point is at least having staff approach DEP and see if that's a discussion that can be had, given the uniqueness of Freeport. So it's not the norm, and I, I think we'll have to balance what's important to our community, and, and they might say no, because you're right, they are minimums, and they say that.
Right, I think specifically things like porches and small, on small lots, I don't see a whole ton of flexibility, but I'm not an attorney.
But you can ask Mike, his thoughts on it too.
And I'm not saying to do it this week, because I know you've got some other things that are coming up.
We agree that that's not gonna happen, but yeah.
Thank you.
Yep, no, thank you.
Do you want to hear from Mike, or do you want to hear from the?
Yeah, sure, I'd be happy to hear Mike's take on that.
All right, Mike, we turned your volume on, so we can hear you.
All right, very good. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
All right, excellent. First, many thanks to the Freeport Planning Board for including me this evening, and particularly for accommodating my attendance via Zoom. I've been battling a bit of a plague for the last week, and I wasn't sure I'd even be able to join in this evening as, you know, as I am, so. I apologize for zooming in, but I appreciate you being given the option. And I'm going to respond similar to Caroline, that, you know, both parties are correct. I think the point of this amendment process is, has been pretty clear from the start, just to amend the ordinance to make it consistent with the state minimum requirements in Chapter 1000 at the state level. And then secondarily, as Ms. Fahey had pointed out, there is a provision within the Mandatory Shoreland Zoning Act, the law itself, that affords any municipality in the State of Maine to petition DEP for an ordinance or provisions within the ordinance that are less restrictive than those state minimum requirements. That is afforded in the law, and some municipalities do that, but generally speaking, that's conducted outside of the, this process that, that the board has, has gone through to get through to, for a document tonight, just to comply with the state minimum standards, so. So that is an option for some point in the future. It's a special process, it would be something that, Caroline, you're not gonna be thrilled with me for saying this, but generally speaking, planning staff would, would listen to some of the concerns from residents, would listen to concerns from the planning board or the council about certain areas within the standards. areas within the standards that seem to be too restrictive for the town of Freeport. And then work with DEP to come up with some language that might be workable for DEP, something that they would accept if it was adopted by the town, by the town's council. It's less restrictive than the state minimum. So there is that vehicle in place and, you know, it may be something the town would want to look at in the future.
Mike, is that a planning board? Would that start with the planning board or would that be like a staff process?
Yeah, it's a great question. I've seen it come from planning boards, I've seen it come from select boards or councils, I've seen it come from code enforcement officers that are, you know, in the field working with landowners all the time, discovering provisions within the ordinance that don't make sense for that particular town. So it could just be staff-driven, it could be board-driven, it could be citizen-driven. So I've seen it from all different angles. If the planning board would like to tackle that, by all means, that's perfectly acceptable.
But wherever it arose from, it would take the form of a proposed amendment that DEP would have to sort of okay and then be executed as an amendment to the zoning?
Yeah, it's a great, great question on process. And I think, I think really before a town would go too far down the road of proposing amendments, anything more formally drafted as a document, I think it would be appropriate to approach the DEP from a more conceptual standpoint. You know, we have an issue in this section of shoreline related to lot coverage. The lot coverage provision is too strict because of A, B, and C. We've run some preliminary numbers and instead of being 20% lot coverage, we were thinking we'd like to petition the DEP for 35% or something like that. And then have that as a more or less formal conceptual discussion with the DEP. And that would most likely be at the staff level. But it could be something the planning board could be involved with and invite DEP to a public hearing to discuss it.
That's great, I learned something. I had no, I did not know. I thought the minimum standards were the minimum standards, so I, yeah.
Last one we heard, we started by initial discussion and from concern raised by residents and then the attorney worked with it, with DEP and the Attorney General. We got the okay, I think it was like I said, a year later on some language. And then we went through the process you were saying, kind of like we're doing tonight, notify the entire shoreline zone, have a public hearing.
Oh, I'm sure this is not a quick, two-meeting operation.
It is not, no.
No, I mean, given how long it's taken us to get to this point, so.
But I think if there's, if we meet the minimums and there's things that come out of the conversation that we flag.
Right.
And always.
No, I think that's great.
Quick question, if, assuming that the state would, the state rules would prohibit a lesser restrictive ordinance, would that also prohibit a variance request?
No, actually, the state allows you to put the variance language in there, but as we talked about before, variance is very hard to meet in a lot of cases that, the first one, you'd have to meet hardship. There is something for a single family, but it would need to be your primary year-round residence, which does exclude a lot of people on the water.
But it would be possible, for example, for this party to go with variance.
Yes, and we made sure, based upon Joyce's comments at the last meeting, you guys put that in the original version and so it's in this version today. They do allow that. And so I'm not sure if we broach it, if they're going to come.
But there has to be a reason for the variance, right?
Yes, the variance standards, yeah.
And it's more than a reason. It's, I mean hardship is basically like, you have to, either you do this thing that you're claiming you need to do or you can't use the house for anything.
Part of me wonders if they'd come back and say, well, you have a variance provision, somebody can apply. But again, you got to ask the question to be told.
Fair enough.
Yes or no? And I think it's something that, if there's interest, we could pursue with your support or the council's support. And so you still have public in the room and you still have about a dozen people online, just so you know.
Yep. Other comments from the public in the room? All right, I, at this point, we would open it up to folks who are participating remotely on Zoom, so if you would like to comment, please raise your virtual hand and we will bring you over into the, I don't know, I don't know the technical term. We will listen to your comment.
Bring them into Zoom land. Well, we're waiting for people to see if anyone wants to raise their hand, since there's none. There was a sheet that looks like this with some highlighting and colored text on the table. There were two clarifications to the original document that was online. One in the shore setback, the DEP definition, which we had put in there, we adopted it to be our own, because it kind of ignored the fact, or not ignored, but it wasn't clear of the cases where people have stable or unstable bluffs, that they have to take that setback from the top of the bank. So we just added some language in there so that it's clear, you can look at that when you go see the definition. And then the piers, docks, and wharfs, et cetera, under the land use standards, there's a reference to coastal waters, but we had to strike out shoreline stabilization because coastal waters doesn't do shoreline stabilization and that's addressed somewhere else. The only other thing I didn't mention to you guys is that we did have DEP take a preliminary review of all of this stuff before you tonight and any comments they gave us were incorporated, which is why there's, we didn't get this out as early as we had hoped, because we got some comments from them Monday and then later this week. And then we just got some comments on coastal waters. So you don't have any hands raised on Zoom? Oh, we have one hand going up. Can I bring over Claire Martin?
Please.
Okay, Claire, there'll just be a one-minute delay. All right, you should be able to go ahead, Claire, if you want to unmute. Are you there?
Good. Can you hear me?
We can hear you now, yep.
Okay, yeah, my name's Claire Martin. I recently purchased a house down on Morganser Way in Freeport. I didn't know if this would be a good time to bring up the shoreline zoning on the island district, or would that be the next part of it?
Nope, I think this is.
I need to talk to someone about.
I think this is a good time. Bring it up and if it's not the right time, we'll let you know.
Coastal waters?
I'm not sure.
Yeah, the coastal waters.
Change on.
Yeah, I think it might be the next part, but anyway, so I bought a little cottage that's a 1938 Maine cottage and it looks directly out on the island district, which is one of your treasured resources and that highly, that you recommended highly, that you would protect that area in your, in your writing there. And that's being taken out, I think because the DMR says that they regulate the waters, but my feeling is we need to keep that, I think that we need to keep that area protected because, one, it's part of the mud flats there that all the migratory birds go through. There's, there's a lot of traffic in that area, there's a lot of wading birds that use that and bald eagles and things like that. So I think that if you really are, you really are committed to looking after that treasured island district, we need to protect the waters just around that, those islands, and that would be Williams Island, which another, they're putting another aquaculture site. Pattinggill, they put a limited aquaculture site and they are trying to put one right off of Sound Pigs. So I am really concerned that this is a nice area to grow scallops and things, but it's also in our best interest to keep that because the residents and the community really use those areas very highly. There's always like tours going in there, there's fishing in there, there's, I just think that we need to keep that as a protected area.
Sure, so Claire, your comments are really pertaining to the aquaculture and the water in that area, is that correct?
No, it's not, it's not just aquaculture, it's anything around those islands. If they are protected, let's protect them, because I bought my house in the way that they're going to be protected. They're bird sanctuaries, there's osprey, there's everything around there. And it is in the highly significant ecologically diverse area that's protected, Maine protects that area. I just feel like that that should stay in our town ordinance and that should be considered during any kind of commercial or any kind of other activities that might disturb that area.
It's a language issue.
Is there a specific language you're referring to, was the question?
Well, my question is, I don't have it right in front of me, but I know it said that this is, this is considered one of the Freeport's most treasured areas, which it really is. And I'm just wondering how we can continue to protect that area while DMR has the ability to put things anywhere, but we value that area. So can we talk to DMR and try to find out some kind of wording that the waters, as, you know, the intercoastal waters that are around those, those things are, continue to be protected?
So I think that this is in relation to the proposed change, and I honestly, I don't even know which public hearing this comes under, but the proposed change to the island district text that is at the head of the island district that sets out the purpose of the island district that is changing to pull out the reference, or the proposed change is to pull out the reference to.
Can you read, Sam, can you read that?
That would be the next.
Can somebody read that?
Yeah, so that would be the next.
Okay.
So I, yeah, sorry, I think there are enough public hearings tonight, we're a little, sorry. So Claire, I think, I think this comment pertains to the next public hearing.
Okay, that's what I thought. I didn't want to, but I just think that we really need to really think about that before we change that. Yeah.
Yes, noted. So we will take.
Okay, thank you.
So we will take your comment and I think we're all hopefully smart enough to put it into the next, put it into the next public hearing.
But you'll have another chance.
But you will also have another chance if you, if you wish to hang around for that public hearing, riveting as these meetings are.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, do we have any other hands for people on Zoom that would like to comment on the first public hearing for the standalone shoreline zoning ordinance?
Are there other, other members of the public participating by Zoom who wish to raise their hands and be called upon?
There are no more hands.
Do I hear a motion to close the public hearing?
Some.
And a second?
There you go. Just a couple seconds.
That goes to Robert. All in favor? All right, the public hearing is now closed. Any further comments, questions, thoughts from the board on item number three, the first public hearing of the night?
I've said enough on this.
Yeah. All right, we've had a few chances to think this one through.
Just that I'm happy it was clarified if we did want to make any further changes. What Joyce brought up is really helpful to know that it could be looked into.
Yes, I think that's a really great point and I'm, I'm happy to know. I do think that the, probably the most efficient way to pass or to advance that cause will be to not go through the planning board over the next year or two, because I think the planning board has a lot on its plate. So if there's a way.
I think that if we want to pursue it, the most efficient way would be to get our ordinance compliant, because it's been a while and every time we send something, like stop piecemealing it. So get our ordinance through this process, have DEP review it for consistency, which they've already done preliminarily. So if you guys decided to make a recommendation tonight, it then goes to council, there's a whole council public hearing, setting a public hearing, having a public hearing. We then send it to DEP and they have 45 days from date of receipt to review and approve the text. So I think we'd want to wait.
Stand by.
Till that's done before we start trying to push the envelope or seeing if there's any flexibility.
But I think also that it seems like, given that there are, and Mike or Caroline, feel free to correct me again, but I, it seems like if there are other avenues, other than going through the board in which to advance this sort of cause, it, your time may be better spent on one of those other avenues, just given how many things the board has over the next year and a half.
I think that I would see this going through the public hearing process, see what comes out of this or the council, because you know, the council had some concerns. Make a list and then would reach out to DEP. We've been talking to them quite a bit lately for all of this stuff. So I wouldn't see it coming to you really until it was more refined or moving forward or at least more of like an update before we had you dig into it, because you do have a lot on your plate. And I think that's more efficient and that way we wouldn't have to wait till once a month as well. Could keep it moving forward a little more timely. If you guys did decide that you wanted to make a motion on this document tonight, I did give you some draft motions based upon the motions you made the last time. You would just want to acknowledge that it was the draft presented at the 4622 Planning Board meeting. And then also, if you're willing to accept the amendments as presented, note that in the motion if you wanted to make one. The last time, you know, you guys wanted to know how it's consistent with the comp plan. Shoreline zoning is the one time, you don't have to make the finding how it's in harmony with the comp plan, but you had, you had done good last time and he tied it to that. So we have the same draft language before you tonight, modified slightly.
Anyone want to take a crack at that motion?
I will, sure. So this was directed, you said, for, this is as of today, right? You didn't say.
Yeah, so I think if you were going to make the motion on here, be it ordered that the Freeport Planning Board recommended the Freeport Town Council the adoption of the new, of a new Town of Freeport Shoreline Zoning Ordinance, Chapter 65, as proposed at the 4622.
Got it.
Meeting with amendments as presented or something like that.
Okay, sure. All right, Ray? The proposed motion, be it ordered, the Freeport Planning Board recommends to the Freeport Town Council the adoption of the new Town of Freeport Shoreline Zoning Ordinance, Chapter 65, as discussed and proposed to the 4622 meeting. Consistent with the town's comprehensive plan vision, that Freeport would be responsible stewards of the environment by protecting environmentally sensitive areas, and the regulations were developed to be in compliance with the state of Maine Mandatory Shoreland Zoning Act.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Excellent, and all in favor? Excellent. Well, we're not there yet, I know. Goes to the council, there'll be another public hearing and then the DEP, as Caroline said, will have 45 days. Thanks again to Mike for being here by Zoom. I know, we're glad to have you here at all, so.
Feel better.
Yes, feel better soon.
Are you letting him off the hook already?
Uh, no, not necessarily. Right, there is, yeah, I mean.
Hold it. Actually, you're here for a while, Mike.
Yeah, sorry, I mean, it all has to do with shoreline, but.
We'll give, we can give him a break on the next one, though.
Yeah, yep.
And the zoning map, really.
Yes. Okay, item number four tonight will be another public hearing, proposed amendments to the Freeport zoning ordinance. So if I can summarize this very quickly, this is basically sort of the other half of what we just passed, which is the part, the fact that we need to clean up all of the rest of the zoning ordinance due to the fact that it is now missing all the shoreline stuff that used to be in there. So that triggers all kinds of little changes and Caroline and Cecilia and others have taken the opportunity to clean up a lot of typos and pronouns and all kinds of good stuff while we're at it. Caroline, do you have other stuff to add?
So the first question I'll add is, did anyone find any typos? Because we had a lot of eyes go through this and found little things here and there. So I think you summarized it very well. It was probably the longest public hearing I've ever had to run, because as we went through the ordinance, we've kind of been making notes over the years about all the inconsistencies. So like site plan, site review, site plan review, or lot area, lot size. And so we tried to clean up a lot of those inconsistencies. We had references to zoning ordinance, zoning districts that don't exist anymore. Last night, the council repealed the vittler's ordinance. I knew that was pending, so this omits reference for food trucks to the vittler's ordinance. There are a couple of things I do want to point out for you tonight. So in addition to taking out the entire section 507, that would be a repeal, that was the whole shoreline zoning section, which you just adopted as a new document. It also, there's a lot of definitions, there's some big changes to the non-conforming section. We had to add some references in zoning districts to refer people to shoreline zoning because they had parcels in the zone that were in the shoreline zone, but it was missing the cross-reference. The other thing I want to note is Section 304 map corrections, based upon advice from our town attorney, any map correction, which honestly, we've only used a couple times in my 20 years here, but a map correction is a zoning map amendment and needs to follow that public process, not this amendment process here. One of the other things, which I'll comment on, because it is somewhat tied to Claire's comment, and we got a comment at the last meeting that there's aquaculture going on. going on. People are concerned and people want to better understand who's, who's doing what. And so we did take another look at this and the way it was in the ordinance, the zoning ordinance, anything under site plan review comes under the review of the project review board, but for some reason, it had aquaculture going to coastal waters. But the Coastal Waters Commission doesn't have any authority for site plan review. And aquaculture in the zoning ordinance, which is a land use ordinance above the hat line, it refers to it being in a building or a structure. So we did fix that reference. So if you're doing aquaculture on land, which I don't believe we have any, that would be under the purview of the project review board. Those are the biggest changes. We did get a comment from Claire about the island district, so I would like to have the board turn to that, just to see if there's anything in there that you might want to look at adjusting or to see what she was referring to. I believe it's on.
117.
It starts on page 119 on the bottom, the island district. I don't see any change to the purpose. Under permitted uses, we're getting rid of a shoreline zoning cross-reference. The language we had added before for cutting, except for islands connected to the mainland, there was an exception for islands that were connected for cutting. And then again, we did add a cross-reference to the shoreline zoning in there.
So it is basically the same.
Yeah, with a few protections and cross-references. But I'm happy to answer any questions that you do have on anything in here. The other two things I think that could be notable is just under section 601, which is enforcement in the Board of Appeals. There's a provision as to when we have to notify DEP and shoreline zoning variances can have reconsideration, which I believe goes to court. That is in here in section 601. And then under section 602, which is site plan review, for any project, no matter where it's located, the project review board reviews it for environmental considerations. Those are actually standards right out of shoreline zoning. We just define universally. So we updated those to reflect the current shoreline zoning, you know, hey, uh, safe and healthful conditions, won't cause water pollution, won't destroy habitat, you know, just basic environmental. So that's a summary for you. And you still have people on Zoom and in the room? This again is a public hearing.
Questions or comments from the board before we open the public hearing?
With the aquaculture one, if they have a land-based building that goes with their offshore-based, how's that handled?
The portion on land, we haven't had any, but the portion on land would come under the purview of the project review board. The, we do have an aquaculture ordinance for intertidal, specifically this to council and coastal waters. And then out beyond that, we don't have any municipal authority.
I was just thinking of these guys that prepped their equipment, their spat or whatever you call it on shore, then take those pieces out and put them on the bottom. I didn't know if that was happening on shore anywhere or.
Not that I'm aware of. If they have above the hat, if they have a building or structure, that's going to trigger a site plan review. Come under this.
Any other comments? Questions from the board?
Let me do, when you're done in the room, you do have a hand on Zoom.
Okay. It has not been opened, correct. Do I hear a motion?
Sure.
So moved. Excellent, and a second from Wayne. Okay, all in favor? Getting ahead of myself here. All right, the public hearing is now open. Do we have anyone in the room before we turn to Zoom? Anyone present in the room who would like to make a comment as part of this public hearing? Once, twice, and to Zoom?
Yes, can I bring over Claire?
Yes.
Okay. All right, Claire, you're good to talk.
Okay, hi again. So just that island district, I'm really worried about it, because it seems like a lot of commercial things are coming really close to those islands. And if you read through your, your, whatever it is, the town's manual, it's, it's, it really talks about how highly treasured the island district is. And now that you talk about aquaculture, one of them is being proposed to be right by sow and pigs, right at the sandbar where all the birds feed. And she's gonna put a huge dock in and a one-story structure. And I, I don't know if Freeport really realizes that, like, it's, it's actually been recommended by aquaculture's best practices that they don't clean and, and do generators and power washing in the ocean. And this is right on, it's, 1.7% of it is in a wildlife habitat and it's also in the island district. So I, I would appreciate it if all of you could really, really focus in on that, because what we would be doing is we would just be protecting that area a little bit more than all the other area, like all the other areas, because that's what the town had said that was very valuable to them and is a treasured resource. So the, the DMR says that that's their intertidal water, but I think that the, the council, the Freeport Council should be able to say, well, we want to protect that. Just in that area. And I know the whole state is looking to expand aquaculture, but I think we, Freeport really needs to be careful, because we're already up to almost, well, there's 60 aquaculture sites right off Freeport in the process, 50 something of them have already been passed. And I don't know if Freeport is aware of how many bins are, uh, this one that's being proposed has 700 bins on the top of the water and 900 bins on the bottom of the water and a float and a house and permanent, like, seven days a week activity out there. So I think that that's before it gets too far. I think somebody needs to investigate this. Thank you. I'm done.
You do have an.
Another hand.
You did, all right, hold on, let's see. You did, they just went away.
I mean, do we have the authority of DM, DMR has identified areas as, as under their jurisdiction? Do we have the authority to?
So I, I guess I'll keep the comments on the item before you. The item before you is the zoning ordinance. It's land-based, it's only above the hat, we're not.
Gotcha.
Legitimate concerns, but at this point, we're talking about. The land use.
Yep.
Aspect of it.
Makes sense.
So I think we'll, we'll continue through public comment, close the hearing, and then.
I think when we get to coastal waters, we can dig into that more, but right now, we're just looking at the land use regulations.
All right, other members of the public on Zoom who wish to raise their virtual hands?
You do not have any other hands up.
All right, motion to close. Anna, and a second. Robert, all in favor? Excellent, the public hearing is now closed on this quite substantial or, wait, I don't know what, what's the word? Yeah, substantial, maybe not.
I feel like she's high-fiving right now. I mean, this was a big.
Well, we didn't, it was mostly a big lift for the staff, I think. There's a lot, there's a lot here that's been cleaned up. I know, I think most of, the intent of the cleanup process was to streamline without changing.
Yeah.
You know, we, we didn't change much of the spirit, hopefully any of the spirit of the zoning here. It's a, it's a, a process that was meant to streamline so that everybody, or make, make it simpler so that everybody can understand what we're trying to do.
Yeah, it was just for consistency. I think, you know, various discussions has flaved, flagged a lot of this document for cleanup. This is really just minor, not changing the intent, just getting things clear, consistent and accurate. And.
Yes, and I think it's a big, I think it's great that we get these kinds of comments too, where we have, where people see this as an opportunity to weigh in on things that, you know, that are being tweaked and changed and maybe their.
Actually, sort of just my question, this may be remedial, but it seems to me that there's a, a need to change this for cleanup to remove the other document, and they have to go together and they have to go to the council together, because they don't make sense if they're not both done.
Exactly.
And the spirit in both cases was to not make changes, but to make technical changes to make it work.
Correct.
In which case, the comment that we just heard, which was interesting, you know, and may involve more restrictive regulation in some areas, but wouldn't be appropriate to do it this time, right? Because it would just distract from the technical cleanup.
Yeah, I think that, I think, you know, the, the point that Joyce, they.
Claire.
Joyce and then Claire.
Right. And I think that, you know, her point of, it should be passed and then we should keep working on it is a point well taken. And I think that applies here too. Other comments or questions?
The other thing I'll note for you is that you're not only hopefully becoming compliant with shoreline zoning, but we've also gotten talked to from the State Department of Forester and Agriculture that we, since we're not regulating timber harvesting, and if you want a timber harvest, you get a permit from them, we need to take out any old references. So they were also happy to see that we're cleaning up. So two agencies, I think, will be pleased.
Yeah, that it's updating.
With the cleanup documents.
So does that mean that Freeport is, is, I wasn't here for those, so I plead ignorance, but you're not regulating timber harvesting in Freeport, so still.
We, we haven't, but we didn't do the proper cleanup to go along with it, so.
So you, you still aren't yet?
We're still not regulating it. You would go through the state for a timber harvesting permit.
And what triggers that?
Can't give you the, can't give you the details on that, not sure.
Used to be 40 acres, but I'm not sure.
My guess is it's over 10 acres, because you can be enrolled in main tree growth with greater than 10 acres. And then you have to timber harvest if you're in tree growth.
Robert's our resident forester.
Cool.
Yeah, we haven't regulated.
Office.
Are you?
I am a forester, yeah, but not in the woods anymore, I wish.
Helpful knowledge.
Do I hear, or do we have any other comments? Do I hear, I think we have another, another. Motion ready to go here if someone wants to take a stab at it in the spirit of dotting our i's and crossing our t's?
It proposed that the Freeport Planning Board recommends to the Freeport Town Council on April 6th, 19, 2022, to remove the shoreline zoning provisions as part of the creation of a separate shoreline zoning ordinance. And it's consistent with the town's comprehensive plan vision that Freeport would be responsible stewards of the environment by protecting environmentally sensitive areas and the regulations were developed to be in compliance with the state of Maine mandatory shoreline, shoreline zoning act, while at the same time including some general ordinance cleanup.
Second.
Did that specifically mention the adoption of these amendments?
Yeah, you should reference as presented at the planning board meeting.
As presented on April.
Whoever's taking the notes, I mean.
You want me to?
No, I think it's.
You don't have to read every single one of them. I think that would be here all night, right?
Yeah.
Great. And I've already heard a second that I'm assuming still applies. All in favor? You good? All right. On to the map amendment, which is item number five, proposed amendments to the official zoning map for the town of Freeport. Again, this is sort of part three of this same project, which is to bring the map into compliance. Do you have other updates for us or?
Sure. So first, I'll embarrass Cecilia Smith, our assistant planner, who's with us tonight. She worked really hard behind the scenes to do all this mataping and modifying what we had in place. And she put a lot of time into it. And when it's there on the wall, it looks pretty. I mean, how hard could it be? But we have to acknowledge all the hard work she put in to that ordinance behind the scenes, because it does make you bang your head against your desk some days and then your computer crashes continuously. So for the people in the room, like the grillers had mentioned, one of the biggest changes to this map is that DEP previously said that if you were an area that had specific high value, high-value bird habitat, you had to be in Resource Protection 1. If you're in Resource Protection 1, your house is nonconforming, you can't really do much with your property. The rules have changed, and so for Resource Protection 1, it's now convert, um, sorry, for the bird habitat areas, it's now converted to standard shoreline zoning. So all of these rules that you just recommended tonight would be in place, but something like the house or some other uses would be considered conforming uses. Freeport is unique with Resource Protection 1, because DEP, as we talked about, does allow you to be more strict. And Freeport, there's two pockets of Resource Protection 1 left that are not related to any of the standard shoreline zoning requirements, but they're actually related to aquifer protection. There's separate discussions going on about what might be appropriate for those areas, but it's not part of this project. So you still see two areas, the area of the South Freeport Water District and up on the Frost Gully on North Main Street where Main Water has their office up there. Those still show as RP1. The map had a very little bit of cleanup, just to draw things a little more accurate since the last one, since we had a little more time. Cecilia did a little bit of cleanup for us. The other change you'll note here, previously, we, the planning board took the coastal bluffs off. We previously drew them on the map, but we ran into changes, or issues, that people were getting the bluffs reevaluated and recategorized. And if it was not unstable or highly unstable, they no longer had to take their setback from the top of the bank, which can make a big difference for people. But because we were showing them on the map and not always accurately, they still had to adhere to taking them from the top of the bank. So we worked with DEP, as a lot of other communities do, and we don't have to show them on the map, but we have to reference them. It's still there, you still have to meet it, but rather, we're attaching the data source, which is the two coastal bluff maps. There's copies there, they were online. They're actually going to be attachments to the official zoning ordinance. Part of us shows on a Freeport map and part of Freeport shows on the ARMS map. So those are there. The other change that's not shown on the map, but is still part of the map, is that all of the areas of the floodplain down along the tidal water are still zoned Resource Protection. You still cannot build in them. Due to the mapping technology and the data we have available, we had some discrepancies in our data. And we all know that FEMA has been also talking about updating the flood maps. So you have a note on the map and attached to the map will be the existing flood maps, which yes, they are from 1985 and they are the black and white ones. Those are the most current flood maps. But again, we're sending people to the source data to avoid any discrepancies we're creating due to mapping. And that's a snapshot. We have Cecilia here, if you have a drawing question. We have Mike Morrison here, if you have a technical question. But this is the same thing that we've previously discussed.
Have you heard about, I, I'd heard whispers that they are going to update the flood insurance maps.
That's my understanding, but they've been working on them for years now, so I don't really know a timeline on that. It would be nice, though.
Yeah, it would, I mean.
Dark preliminary maps. They're just waiting on.
Oh, there are, okay.
Yeah, dark preliminary.
Are they, are there substantial changes, you know?
Yeah, there are in some areas of Freeport, which I think caused a lot of the delay. I think we've had the preliminary maps. I don't know if it's 2013 or 2016, we've had them for quite a while, but there were some areas that people were going back and asking them to revisit, because they didn't feel like they were.
Yep.
Categorized correctly. I think that's contributed to the. But they, my understanding is we'll have all that digital data once they do that, whereas now we have these.
Yeah.
Any questions from the board? Do I hear a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
And a second? All in favor? The public hearing is now open. Any members of the public will do the, the room first. Anyone in the room who wishes to comment? And online?
You do not have any hands on Zoom.
Do I hear a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved. Second.
And a second, all in favor? It seems fairly straightforward. I really like the, just send them to the source. It seems like a very clean way to do it. It automatically updates when the source updates. It's great. Any other comments or do I hear a motion to adopt these map amendments? I think you have to read a motion, unfortunately.
That's right.
I thought you did just nominate yourself.
I did. All right. That the Freeport Planning Board recommends that the Freeport Town Council adopt the proposed amendments to the official zoning map for the town of Freeport dated April 6th, 2022. The boundaries of the shoreline zone as regulated by state law will be updated. Many areas previously designated. Many areas previously designated as Resource Protection One are being amended to shoreline areas. Areas within coastal floodplains will remain in Resource Protection One based upon the FEMA flood insurance rate maps, which will not be attached to the official zoning map.
That should be now. Sorry?
Oh, it should be now?
Now, yes.
Which will be now attached to the official zoning map. The most recent coastal bluff map by the Maine Geological Survey will also be attached to the official zoning map to show areas of highly unstable or unstable coastal areas.
Coastal bluffs, that should say. Sorry.
Coastal bluffs.
Do I hear a second? Second. Robert gets the second. All in favor of adopting these new maps? All right. And item number six, the final public hearing of the night. Proposed amendments to the, again, to chapter, well, not again, to chapter twenty-one, the Coastal Waters Ordinance. Proposed amendments will include text changes to make sections of the ordinance consistent with the minimum requirements of the Shoreland Zoning Act. And updated standards for float, dock, and wharf permits include a new standard for the length of float, dock, or wharf, and how far it can extend across the width of a water body or wetland, removing an outdated reference to aquaculture, removing fees from ordinance text, and other non-substantive text amendments. Do you have?
Sure. So piers, docks, wharfs, and other structures, et cetera, are actually regulated under shoreline zoning. Most communities have, you don't have to read them or regulate them. They're optional. It's one of the optional things in shoreline zoning. Freeport has always regulated them, and they've regulated them a little more strictly, like we prohibit, we set restriction on the length, the max of one twenty-five feet. We also have a requirement for width of the lot that they can be on. Back in the early two thousands, we took them out of our zoning ordinance, or out of our shoreline. We took them out of the review by Coastal Waters or Planning Board, and we put it into the Coastal Waters Ordinance and under the authority of the Coastal Waters to review. The Coastal Waters Committee had approached the Town Council. They wanted to add some additional regulations pertaining to the length of a dock. So when that discussion came up, we said, hey, we're doing shoreline zoning, and that's a shoreline zoning provision. So at the same time, we look at updating that standard, we need to update your ordinance to be consistent with shoreline zoning. Luckily, the time we worked out, we could do it all at the same meeting. So the changes you have before you tonight, they're, again, a little bit of wordsmithing cleanup. One of the basic things we're doing here is proposing also to take out references to fees. We don't like fees in ordinances, because every time you need to amend them, there's a big lengthy process. It's much more efficient to have them separate on a fee schedule. So those are just some housecleaning. Under definitions, there's some definitions under shoreline zoning pertaining to piers, docks, and wharfs, and to some other uses that were already in the ordinance. So we needed to add those definitions. And the most substantial change in this document, if you want to flip, will come to page nineteen, article eight. And you did have an amendment sheet before you tonight. And so article eight point seven, one through six is really language to make us consistent with shoreline zoning. Number seven, article seven, permit application A. The language before you is just to note, there's a reference to projects, so just inserting that all of the items noted above are considered structures. That's important for shoreline zoning. And then, under the standards for approval, there's shoreline zoning provisions. There's the existing coastal waters, you know, restrictions, the length of one hundred and twenty-five feet. Under eight A three, the current terminology of waterfrontage should just be changed to shorefrontage to be consistent with shoreline zoning. And again, that's on the language before you tonight. There is a standard in here regarding the length. We thought that Mark Morrissey from Coastal Waters, the chairperson, was going to be here. He is not. Were you prepared to talk about the length standard on behalf of Coastal Waters? Okay.
Hundred and twenty percent.
The, can extend more than a fourth of the way? Do you want to explain that to the board where you guys came from that, some background on that? Jeff Stenzel is on the Coastal Waters. He's the former chairperson.
We do have to ask you to make your way to the lectern for the record.
Mark Morrissey is sorry he can't attend. He's the current chair, but I was the chair for many years before that. My name is Jeff Stenzel. I live in South Freeport Village. So this is a complicated subject. We've gone back and forth, and I will say that the full Coastal Waters Commission has not discussed all of these changes, but for the most part, they follow changes that Nick Adams and a few of us initiated in two thousand eighteen, anticipating that it would have to come in compliance with shoreline zoning. Specifically, what Carolyn was talking about is the, did you say twenty or twenty-five percent?
The, under eight A two, where it can, may extend more than one-fourth of the way. No part of the project may extend more than one-fourth of the way across the width of a water body, wetland, et cetera.
So that sort of approximates an Army Corps standard that is designed to allow navigation when there are structures on both sides. And the Army Corps regulation is, you can't extend more than twenty-five percent into the navigable waterway at low tide. This leaves fifty percent of the waterway navigable at low tide. You know, I guess you could go back and forth, twenty, twenty-five percent. It might be worth a little more discussion, you know, before it's finally adopted. But it is designed so that navigation is preserved, and you might want to sharpen the definition to be parallel to the Army Corps definition of at half, at, at low tide.
Yeah, I think that's an interesting, where is the measurement taken, like, because, you know, I think of like the Hersega River in places where it's twenty-five percent from high water. You know, you're not even into the channel, but then in other places, it might be more restrictive, leave very, so, yeah.
So Coastal Waters brought this forward with some strict numbers, but it, we needed something that was, people were able to understand and that was enforceable. So there was quite a bit of talk with the chair, Jeff, and the town attorney to come up with the language before you. It seemed to be the best compromise. So now somebody could put, you know, a structure or dock in if it was one hundred and twenty-five feet. This would introduce limitations. I think, you know, based upon what I hear, it sounds like the level of applications that Coastal Waters is seeing is more complex, and there's been some concerns about navigation and not blocking that, which is kind of some of the background behind it. But again, the one-fourth of the way across the width of the water body, and so here it says, as measured by the total straight line distance from the highest annual tide of the shoreline in which the project would be placed to the highest annual tideline on the opposite shore.
Where are you reading that?
This is on page twenty-one, eight A two, Coastal Waters Ordinance.
Do we have, were we provided the Coastal Waters?
That might have come via email or, or separate mailing. Do you want me to get the copy for you?
I don't have it.
It'd be helpful.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm thinking of, I mean, I'm sure, I'm sure you guys have thought of this on the Coastal Waters Commission, but, you know, there's, there must be places where you have, where that measurement is, say, five hundred feet, but building a twenty-five, a hundred and twenty-five foot structure doesn't even get you into the channel.
Yeah, once again, wouldn't that be a variance situation?
I don't know.
It'd be very hard to.
Section eight A three. I don't know, what were you thinking?
So where were you?
Page twenty-one, eight A two.
It's all, okay, yep.
What? Oh, yeah, copy.
I will make one other comment while you're reading that. There are several levels of review above Freeport, so there's DEP. They have, they have a different set of eyes, and then there's Army Corps. And if somebody is proposing a seasonal structure, which is something that they kind of put in in the spring and take out in the fall, then it doesn't get necessarily reviewed as strictly as a permanent structure. So this might be a benefit for some of the seasonal structures and also up some of these tributaries, where really there's difficult to have a, a big permanent warfing out.
If you build a permanent structure, do you need approvals from all three of those agencies? Through, through here and then through the?
Yes.
You do. Yeah.
So you're saying that the pier is what's regulated here, and the ramp and float, if, assuming we're talking about a pier, ramp, and float, as might be typical.
The whole thing makes the project, the whole system.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so now that length of the entire system, which is every component
Yep.
can be one hundred and twenty-five feet, so now there's
From the high tideline.
Additional.
That really isn't a change?
No, that's not a change, but that's what the standard is today. They have the one twenty-five as a standard. And so now, in some of our codes, this would be adding a, an additional restriction.
So the one, the one-fourth is the additional restriction. That's a change.
Yeah, instead of doing, you know, the talk was like, there, it started as, there, we could just prohibit it in areas where it's under a certain width. It might not be appropriate, but then, you know, there was conversation, well, is there something that might make sense and still allow some opportunity, not one hundred and twenty-five feet, but still give you a chance?
Launch a kayak or whatever.
Something, and I think, you know, Jeff made the relation of the one-fourth, which some people are using for certain Army Corps permits, so.
Yeah, no, I think it's a common sense. Yeah, it's good.
Can I just point out one other thing that might, you might want to tweak?
Yep.
On page twenty, seven A two. It says, copy of signed and received certified letters. Does the word received mean that the builder has received back a signed certified letter?
That is your existing ordinance, copy of signed and received. I would think it's like the card that shows, that you sign when you get certified, but what have you guys been requiring?
Our practice has been just to have a photocopy that certified mail has been sent out to a butters. We don't necessarily expect that they'll, you know, count every received certified letter. A lot of people just round file it. Some people don't even live here and, don't even live in the country during the winter when a lot of these projects are proposed.
Yeah, I think that makes sense. It was, you sent it, you know, you've got proof that it was sent to all those.
Wait a minute. So you're saying if it was sent to somebody and they never received it, it's too bad their notice was?
Well, it's, the feedback from the, the builders has been that it's, it's virtually impossible to get these things back.
You can't hold a project if someone's on vacation for two months, because they're not receiving the mail.
People, people can choose to not sign them either. You know, you do have a similar provision in the zoning ordinance. Like, if you mail it, and for some reason, somebody doesn't get it, it doesn't.
Mailing it is good enough.
Yeah.
That's your responsibility.
Yeah.
I mean, again, you can be more strict, but if it's not current practice, I, we don't want something on the books that's
No, I don't think
we're not upholding.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, you could probably ask any survey company what their response rate is, and you see right there that there's, right? I mean, it's hard to get people to.
You do the best you can. You try, yeah.
So I think if you wanted to, based upon the recommendation of Coastal Waters, and again, public hearings, you can hear from the public, but you could consider under seven A two, you could look at changing it. Proof that certified letters have been sent to a butters within two hundred and fifty feet of the proposed project. I think that is your intent, correct?
Yes. So I see a lot of changes within this document. We're here discussing just the permit application and?
The changes in here.
Or this is after, so we have all the changes in here?
Oh, yeah, these, these two came in today. Yeah, these two came up for additional clarity. Yeah, the changes in here are the new standard
Yep.
that Coastal Waters wa, wanted for the length of the dock.
Okay.
And then really the minimum, the cleanup, and then the minimum requirements that we need to get it consistent with shoreline zoning. And this was done, the town attorney worked on this.
Okay.
And then DEP did a preliminary review, which is why you have the two additional amendments on the separate sheet of paper tonight.
Okay, that makes
But we can see everything that wasn't just ported over, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
The rest of it was all existing.
Yeah, most of it is existing. It's really just all tying into that piers, docks, and lock, because that's what comes under shoreline.
That makes sense. Okay.
And again, this is a public hearing tonight.
Any other questions?
We have not opened.
We have, oh, yeah, we did.
No, I don't know you didn't. No, I
That was her.
I put Jeff on the spot since he was the Coastal Water, so thank you, Jeff, for clarifying that.
All right. Any other comments, questions, clarifications before we open the public hearing from the board? I hear a motion to open the public hearing. And a second from Wayne. Excellent. All in favor?
Sam, who seconded it?
Uh, I believe Wayne seconded. Andy was the motion maker, maker of the motion. So the public hearing is now open. Any members of the public who are in the room who wish to comment? And online?
You do have online. We have Tim Forrester, so I will move him over to comment. You can unmute him whenever you're ready.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can.
Great. Hi, good evening, everyone. I'm Tim Forrester with Atlantic Environmental. I routinely submit applications to the town for dock projects. I've been a consultant for twenty-some-odd years and worked well with Coastal Waters, and I appreciate all their efforts. I'm neither for nor against these changes, so to speak, but there are some points. I, I just got my hands on the document, so I skimmed through it and just wanted to shed some light on a few points. So under the permit applications under seven A, first is the submission of a letter thirty days in advance to gain access to a following agenda, and, and then it says you need to submit seven copies. I guess I'm wondering why it has to be thirty days in advance, and why do you submit a letter, and then it doesn't say when you have to submit your seven copies? In, in my opinion, it might be a little more, it might be easier for the applicants just to say, you need to submit seven copies perhaps two weeks prior to the following agenda. So that, that was that one comment. In terms of the certified letters, there's basically two ways to notify someone. There's the typical green letters of certified mail that they sign, and those are mailed back to you. Historically, I would say I do receive most of those, and I photocopy them and bring them to the meeting. There is another method, which is a certificate of mailing, and that is when you go to the post office, they will, they will stamp out a letter that has all the addresses on it, and it shows the date and time that they were mailed. So that perhaps could be included. That, that's another way to say that, yes, I did mail these, and here's the list of people that I did mail them to. So it's a certificate of mailing. Going down a little bit further under items B, there's number two, which says, when will the structure be built? These are small comments and not a big deal, but I, I guess, I'm not really sure. but I guess I'm not really sure why that needs to be there. You receive your permits, you're approved to build a project. Does it matter if I build it spring, summer, fall, winter? You know, typically builders, dock builders are building ramps and floats in the winter and installing existing systems in the spring and then removing them in the fall. So they're, you know, they're building in the summer and sometimes in the early winter, in the shoulder seasons. The next one is, "Will a butters be allowed access?" Again, that's a question, I don't know if that's how important that is. Your butters may change, and, you know, some people may or may not want to allow that. So I don't know if that is really significant. Who will build, store, and maintain the project? Again, that's something that's subject to change. I've had many jobs where I've lined it up with a certain contractor, and at the 11th hour, it's changed and a different contractor builds it. So, and the same thing with storage and maintenance. When your project is stored, perhaps that company is no longer in existence or there's a falling out or something like that. Future plans for expansion? You know, you come in with an application, that's what it is. I suppose you can still ask the question, but I'm not sure if that's a real relevant one. And then to the good stuff here on the next page, 21. So the discussion about the 120, 100 maximum length of 125 feet and then the one-quarter width from highest annual tide. I think Jeff was correct in his reference from the Army Corps of Engineers, where we're really talking about navigable waterways. Your navigable waterways are not from the highest annual tide. So I think I might have heard a little bit of confusion in how that discussion went tonight. And I just wanted to sort of remind the board that, you know, that one-quarter width is your navigable waterway. So perhaps that's what it should be limited to. You already set your 125-foot standard. That reduces the ability of a lot of people to warf out already. And if you were to follow the Corps', Army Corps' prescription of that, when you move up into narrow channels that, let's say they're 40 feet wide, you know, that only gives someone 10 feet to land a structure in. So if it's Coastal Waters concerned that these upper intertidal areas perhaps should be limited in their use, you know, the further you go in, the narrower it gets, and eventually you trip that. So I think the definition is more clearly stated to say the navigable waterway as opposed to from the highest annual tide. And that's also sort of consistent with what you say in then on page 22 under item, under item seven in that first paragraph. "No project located on a river stream or brook shall obstruct public access to navigable portions of such water bodies." So the term "navigable" would be consistent in both applications or in both sections of the ordinance. And then just jumping back a little bit to item four on page 21.
Can I just ask a clarification on that? So you're saying, never mind about the one-quarter of the way, you just can't go past, you're suggesting that you just couldn't go past into the navigable waterway? However, and is that always?
By more than one quarter, yeah.
No, by more than?
My suggestion is not that you, is just that you be consistent with the use of that in the term of navigable waterway.
Right, so
Don't make that quarter width from highest annual tide to highest annual tide because on one side of the water body, someone might not even get to the navigable waterway.
And on the other side, they could be all the way across it.
And so your suggestion is, your suggestion is that the pier end before the navigable waterway? Is that what you're saying? That that would be the limit?
That the structure, that you establish the navigable waterway, not measure it from highest annual tide to highest annual tide. Basically, from like the edge of the salt marsh where it drops down into the mud flat.
Yep.
From that bank to the other bank, and you'd be allotted one-quarter or whatever dimension
I see.
the town decides.
There was a lot of talk that went into this, and a lot of the concern was that you need something that a normal person can understand, and that would be clearly enforceable. I think we could look to Jeff, I'm going to put you on the spot again. Or I know Mike just turned back on. Since I'm not a boater in the tidal waters, "navigable" is very vague to me. I'm not sure if there's a strict interpretation. Like you'd need a really clear definition of that if it's something we're going to try to measure off of.
Yeah, I mean.
But we can, you can hear other comments.
I picture like, yeah, that spot where if you pick, you know, you go down the dip by Mass Landing there, and you look out, and there's a spot typically where the channel is pretty well defined. But I don't, I'm, you know, that's the limit of my knowledge about that. I don't know how you put that into writing and make it a clear standard.
Do you want to hear, Tim has other comments, and then we could look at him.
Yeah.
So on page 21, item seven, "No temporary project used for non-commercial uses shall be wider than six feet in width." My only concern with that is that typically your floats are wider than six feet. So project defines pier, ramp, and float. So you'd be limiting your float to six feet in width in that standard. Does that make sense?
Yeah, so I believe that's a shoreline zoning standard for piers, docks, and morphs and non-tidal. But after working with the attorney, it got put into this version.
Yeah, so six feet in width is a standard for the width of a pier, not for a float dimension for residential use.
Yeah, six feet is a pretty narrow float.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. That's definitely worth noting.
And then, and then the last one is one of my favorite topics with Mike. And that is on page 20. Well, actually, it's not really on a page, but it's about float haulouts. So, you know, you have a lot of instances. The ordinance says you're allowed one pier dock war for other similar structure. And there's been some issues with how you then interpret a float haulout, which is really a couple of stringers extending down into the resource in order to store the float in the off-season. And I'm hopeful that, you know, that could be elaborated on by the town. There's many situations such as, you know, people that live out on an island. And, you know, Freeport has 10, 12 islands. And, you know, they would have to, a contractor would have to come and get their float and perhaps bring it back to the mainland or find some other location to store it. You know, a haulout is a functionally water-dependent use. In my mind, its purpose is for the storage of the float, but it's only for that use. And, you know, if you're only limited, if you're limited to one pier, pier dock, ramp, or float, that doesn't allow you to build this haulout next door, which is just two little stringers. Unless you were to physically attach it to the pier, then it would be part of that structure. It's, so it's a little convoluted, and I guess I'm hopeful that the town might be able to explore the use of haulouts in the ordinance.
All right.
And that was my last comment, thank you.
Thank you for those comments. Right, those of us who are not there with the marine services industry can benefit from some of this. I think, yeah, I mean, there's a couple, there's a couple of things in there. Is that, is the six-foot prohibition something that we?
Yes, my understanding is the six-foot, like I said, was taken out of language. And Mike, correct me if I'm wrong, raise your hand, but was for non-tidal areas. And working with the attorney, it's something that was carried into here. I believe you do have flexibility on that. I'd have Mike weigh in on the structures, but when sections of the pier, dock, or wharf are not in use, they're considered setbacks, which is why you have that standard that we just talked about. So if you take your float out, it's not in use, it's not functionally water-dependent. It's a structure, you need to meet setbacks. So yes, people should already not be storing them there to be consistent with DEP regulations. And this is clarifying that on the books. There are people that already do not store them on-site, but this could make further limitations if there's, you have to meet the setbacks.
Does the, is that a DEP rule? Or is that you can't store your floats?
Yes, DEP did look over this language that they consider them structures, is my understanding. Mike, is that something you could weigh in on, the haulouts in the off-season?
Sure, I try to avoid that topic quite frequently, but it's inevitable. Just a quick note, DEP, under a different law, the Natural Resources Protection Act also regulates these sorts of structures, both flow haulouts, piers, ramps, floats, and all the rest. So there, they've, DEP under that regulation has worked on making some amendments to the NRPA, Natural Resources Protection Act, to begin to allow for float haulouts, as Tim has described. Because a lot of folks just don't have a place to put them or take them during the off-season. And it's better to, in a lot of people's minds, to have them on these float haulouts, kind of in that inner tidal zone, instead of clearing a swath up on the vegetated buffer up on the land to store these during the off-season. So that's a DEP standard there. Otherwise, the piers, docks, or standards in the ordinance that are proposed do, for the most part, match DEP's Chapter 1000 shoreline zoning standards. And float haulouts are not really recognized there either, other than what Tim had also mentioned, that they are or could very well be considered to be functionally water-dependent structures, not needing to meet shoreline setback standards. So hopefully that helps.
So it hinges on the interpretation of water-dependent structures? And if you consider them to be year-round or not?
Right, and a lot of these docks, my understanding, we have going in are seasonal, so they do come out of the water.
Right. But if you, yeah, I see, I see the point.
That's a tough
That's an interesting one, because it seems to me like the, like the, I mean, just, again, I'm no expert on this, but the damage that, or the sort of impact on the shoreline zone from having a dock that's sort of, or a bunch of dock, a bunch of floats swinging around in a cove is a lot greater than pulled up on a couple of haulouts.
Like I said, the DEP did review these as written. If it's something we want to get additional clarification on, we could try to do that and do that.
But you'd have to go back to later.
Before you act, or you could act, and then we could go back to them, or we could put it on the list of other things. There's many ways we can handle it.
Yeah.
You do have additional hands raised in the Zoom audience.
Okay, so the six-foot thing would also be subject to, I guess, I mean.
Yeah, Mike, they have flexibility on the six feet, am I correct on that?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't address the six-foot piece. The state regulations for the width of a pier, ramp, float under the Chapter 1000 standards is limited to no more than six feet in width on non-tidal waters for a residential dock. It's not limited actually under the shoreline zoning provisions for tidal water bodies. So it's an important distinction there. Separately, DEP does, under the Natural Resources Protection Act, again, a different law that's administered exclusively by DEP, they will limit residential piers on tidal waters to no more than six feet. So effectively, it's there, it's just under a different regulation.
Yeah, that, I'm not sure that helps me understand what our options are.
Both cases, Mike, you're saying non-tidal is where they're regulated.
Well, yeah, DEP, all right, so let's just boil it down from a shoreline zoning standpoint. Six feet, which is what we're talking about for the town of Freeport ordinance, six feet is the limit on non-tidal water. So Sebago Lake, you know, any lake or pond or river, non-tidal river in the state would be subject to that six-foot width limit. For tidal water bodies, the Chapter 1000 guidelines, shoreline zoning guidelines, don't limit that, don't limit the width of a dock or a pier to six feet. But effectively, because of a different DEP regulation, and they're limiting piers to no more than six feet, effectively, it is a limit to six feet, so.
It doesn't apply to the float, is that right?
Yeah, I wouldn't recommend to the town that it try to pursue anything wider than six feet for a residential dock or ramp or float or pier, I should say, in tidal waters in the town of Freeport.
That's what's confusing is that you have this state-identified shoreline zone, but now the DEP has this like overlay of other rules that, I don't know if they conflict, but they're just additional that you, instead of just putting it all within the shoreline zone.
Yeah, we do run into that. They don't all work together. I guess by putting it in here, people might not be happy, but ultimately, at the end of the day, if they're not going to be able to get their NRPA permit, which is what Mike's saying, they're going to restrict it. Mike, my other question for a follow-up on this, do they have to get those NRPA permits for permanent and/or seasonal docks? When is that going to come into play?
Great question. Temporary structures are not regulated by the DEP under the Natural Resources Protection Act, period. And temporary structures include temporary docks. These are structures that are in place less than seven months out of the calendar year. So the town does regulate temporary docks and ramps and floats and piers, whereas DEP does not. So anything permanent would be regulated by both the town and the DEP. Temporary would only be regulated by a town.
That's the leeway for your war.
Yeah, and so the wording here says, "No temporary project." So you could say, "Permanent comes under this too," before you correct Jeff. And, okay, so you could put, if you wanted to, "No permanent project for non-commercial could be limited to no wider than six feet." I don't know if that's a standard Coastal Waters had gotten into or not as a commission.
May I comment?
Can you guys tell me?
Yeah, you have some other hands up in Zoom, too.
Yep, I guess I just want to clarify, it's really the use of the word "project" here because project defines your pier, ramp, and float. I see no problem in limiting a pier and a ramp to no more than six feet in width, but it's the float that I'm concerned about. If you limit someone to a six-foot-wide float, you might as well not have a project because that's landing a ramp on a sheet of paper. You know, the ramp will sink the float. A typical float size, the most typical, is like a 10 by 20. So if that section were to read, "No temporary pier used for non-commercial uses shall be wider than six feet," to me, that seems logical. But if you make it project, you include the float in that, that kills your project.
That's what I've been trying to get at, and I think I finally understand what we're dealing with. Apologies for my inexperience with this issue. But yeah, I agree, it seems to me that we need to have a provision for seasonal floats that are wider than six feet. We, that would be a big thing if we started restricting that. Not sure I've ever seen one that narrow.
I think if project were changed to pier, that would make sense.
That seems like a, that seems like a common sense approach. How does the board feel about that? I know we're still in a public hearing, too.
You do have a hand up from Mike here.
Yeah, Mike?
Yeah, sorry, I just wanted to add to this discussion, too, that, and I, I'm sorry if I wasn't clear a few minutes ago. Still a bit fuzzy in the head here with this call, but DEP and from a Natural Resources Protection Act standpoint and shoreline zoning standpoint would support floats that are greater than six feet in width. I just want to add that to the equation. So what Tim is commenting on or requesting is very reasonable and should be supported by DEP.
Yeah, I think that's a really good change.
Yep.
Good catch. Speaking for myself at least. Other members of the public on Zoom, I know we have at least one more hand. I can't see that far, but please.
The hand did go down. Um, the hand did go down.
Anyone here or on the internet?
Carter Becker.
After this, you have a hand back up, sorry for procedure.
Okay.
Freeport resident, Freeport worker. Just to reiterate what Tim has said, he's made some great points, please listen to him on his float situation. Mike Morris has got, done great work on this. As long as you use with your other things, we need to go back and refine this after the fact. In expediency, please put it forward, but be cur, uh, we need to go back and refine some things. It's not accurate, which is great, but we need to put it forward to get something. As long as we acknowledge, we can go back and work on it. So this is the same situation as was asked by Joyce. With the floats, they are wider, they're not, whether they're temporary or permanent, they need to be wider. Brewers does not restrict it to six foot wide, there is year round structure. So we can't let them, put them out because they have full year round, not everything is temporary. The quarter, the, with the width, the 125, the quarter inch, can we continue to talk about that because it is confusing? To get something through and then go back, I'm a man, I'm perfectly good with putting it through as long as you admit, yes, that zone, we can straighten things out unless there's a time when you can straighten it out before that. I don't want to slow you down. But there's, and the haulouts, I can't, with, I'm with Tim 100%. We need to have that discussion because the haulout is part of the structure or system or project. It's your pickup truck, you're buying it without tires. You gotta have a haulout to do it. And the haulout is not to leave it in the wetland zone. It is to assist in getting it up above that highest annual tide, out of the water. And it is a vehicle to get your float there. It's not, so we, we need to continue that and please consider, consider the whole system of the wharf or project. Haulout is part of it. I can't drive my truck without tires, well, I can't take care and maintain my system without a haulout. So we're putting much undue stress on everybody because haulouts preserve the nature by having us not drag these over the environment. It keeps it elevated above as we get it to where DEP would like it to be. There's conflict between Army Corps and DEP on where these floats should be stored. One says only mean high water. The other one talks about up above hat. So maybe some clarification at the town level of what you would like to see and use haulouts to get them there. So there is some cleanup and discussion that needs to be had there. You've had a lot of good comments. I think you've heard enough. Thank you for all your hard work. Let's just keep open eyes to change it slowly in the year or so to come. Not take it as a hard, hard document, but a living document. Thank you.
Thank you, Carter.
You want to take comments from Zoom?
Sure.
Okay, Joyce, we're bringing you over, you're good to go.
Hi, this is Joyce Fayou, now down on Islandview Lane.
Wow, I think you're the first person to participate both in person and virtually in the same meeting, that's a.
I think so, I like being the first every now and then.
That's great, yeah, no, kudos.
Mine was just a real short little, the gentleman before Carter mentioned the, um, going to the post office and doing the certified letters versus doing a, a certified letter from the post office that the letters were mailed. And from my previous life, I remember there's extra postage if you do that green card. And so by adding that they could do a certified letter from the post office, so one letter had all different ones on there, you might be saving them a few bucks. That's all, thank you.
Any, any other hands?
You do not have any other hands, but before you close, the other thing I just want to note to you here that we didn't talk about is that there was an outdated reference to aquaculture, which coastal waters can't regulate. We talked about the aquaculture and the intertidal, the above the hat, so that was proposed to be struck. It's not something they have used and there's actually no standards to go along with the one sentence.
One thing I think that would be helpful is in the definitions, if we add the definition of a haulout, it seems like it's a fairly controversial thing and I, what's I missing, I don't, I don't see it.
I don't believe DEP defines that, I will look to Mike since he's the shoreline zoning expert on the room.
Thanks for asking. I am not aware of any shoreline zoning or NRPA definition for a haulout. I'm not sure that I've ever seen an Army Corps definition of that either. There probably is some standardized definition somewhere, but I'm, I'm not aware of it.
I mean, that's got to be step one, right? If it's a fairly controversial use and people considering it's part of the structure, if not, but there's really not even a definition of it with any of the agencies, so that's, makes it hard to.
Feels like a whole can of worms.
I mean, it really does.
Huge can of worms, yeah. We could just, we could just devote every meeting for the next year to this, right?
Luckily, there's a coastal waters.
Well, yeah, so that was actually my next, that was my next question is where, what, what do we, what is our role in this?
That's a great, the great question. So this is before you because you are the municipal reviewing authority for Freeport and the municipal reviewing authority for Freeport is responsible for upholding the shoreline zoning process to have our standards be compliant. So that's why this is before you, otherwise it hasn't come before you. And if piers, docks, wharfs wasn't in here, it probably wouldn't even come before you, if that makes any sense. I think the questions on submissions and timing, those are, I don't feel like those are in the board's purview. That's coastal waters procedure, not our area of expertise. I don't think that's anything we should weigh in on tonight. I think Jeff heard that there's some questions raised, he can choose to bring that back to coastal waters. As far as the width, again, I, we really brought that width limitation forward based upon coastal waters discussion. The Army Corps standard does say that no structure extends across greater than 25% of the waterway width at mean low water. I think we started with some mean low tide language, but we got into this great debate of if there was a number and who would need to be there when to enforce it. And that was part of the reason I think that the attorney drafted it with the high water. If you want to get into a discussion on the length, I think I'd refer you to Jeff and see if he needs to bring it back to coastal waters to get them to weigh in more.
Right, yeah, I guess that's part of the question, does coastal waters, who writes the language for the?
Coastal waters had drafted some language that they brought to the council and then Mark, the chairperson, and Jeff, the past chairperson, worked with the town attorney to come up with this new language on the length, which they felt met the intent of what coastal waters was trying to achieve by having a length.
So it's, it's, this is in front of us because of the piers section. And, and that is such a complicated section, we have a whole board that kind of writes, you know, kind of oversees everything.
They oversee a whole bunch of things, but, yes, the planning board used to back in the day.
And they, and you have not fully vetted or approved this language?
Well, no, we, this.
You wrote it, but you didn't, go ahead.
Could we get you, could we get you to lectern, sorry, just for the record?
Jeff Stenzel again. So this is pretty much the language that we worked on in 2018 with Nick Adams. And then things kind of stalled out. Nick, I think, worked very hard at adding a lot of definitions that were missing, maybe a gender neutral language. But the, some of the stuff like what Tim was talking about and what I talked about, we really need to go over that a little more closely before the, I think the final language is adopted would be the best way to say it. But we, but I agree with Carter that we should get it moving. And I will say that the Coastal Waters Commission is also in favor of ways, but that's, that's just kind of lost in the murk of state regulations at this point. And Nick is the code enforcement officer is really in a bind here. I don't think he necessarily disagrees with it, but he can't find language that authorizes it at this point in time.
Talking about haulouts specifically.
Haulouts, yeah. So, but to speak to Carter's point, I think it doesn't hurt to say that, you know, we support it and then, you know, DEP might be able to comment on it.
You also have the issue of the six foot. I don't know if you guys were going to discuss that or want, I don't.
So six foot is a, is a standard width. I think what people were concerned about is that the way the sentence is written, it also applies to the float.
Yeah.
And that's just not structurally going to gut it.
Yeah, right, I think so, so it seems it's pretty universal agreement about that being a problem.
Just change that word.
Let's say except for the float portion of the project and then leave it, leave the rest the same.
I could zero it in, just change the project.
Change the word project.
I think I liked the way that Wayne crafted that because this is the approval standard and A says the following standards are applicable to all projects, which would include all components. So I think if you somehow acknowledge it applies, but exempt the float.
So just put in piers and ramps?
What did you?
Except for the.
Except for the float.
What did you say?
Except for the float portion of the project.
Yeah.
For a temporary project?
Yes.
And then for the rest, the language?
No, it's not temporary, permanent too.
Permanent too, except for the float portion.
That's what's the point you were, yeah, Brewers.
May I make a simple solution? If you strike the whole line at this level, to, to get this through and bring it back at a later date, because this seems to be a bigger discussion than we, you want to take up at this time. So just take that one V right off. Because DEP controls the six foot for permanent structures and piers. And I don't think you're changing the, your intent. But if you take the whole line right out of there, you've removed your controversy of float, pier, wharf, because the old language, I believe, was the pierhead or wharf can't be six feet. With DEP and Army Corps, they didn't even talk about the float. This, because you've changed the definition of float, wharf, dock, pier to project, you haven't been able to secur, separate, separate it out, you've put it all in one pot. So by eliminating that whole line item period, you've eliminated the problem. And if it is a problem, DEP already regulates the pierhead at six feet. I, I think you can move forward quickly just by striking the whole line. Just my two cents, thank you.
I, I think that makes sense, what, why is it, why is, why do we identify as project?
That was based upon the advice of the town attorney. She specifically started calling these projects, so it was clear that includes all the components.
Yeah.
Of.
But the designation makes sense when we're talking about the length, right? But apparently not when we're talking about the width.
I mean, based upon what Mike was saying, it sounds like the, the six feet is going to apply regardless, except for the float. So I think you could do multiple things, you, regardless, they're still going to have it. You could do Wayne's suggestion and say, except for the float portion of a project. Or if you feel like this isn't ready and you want it to go to coastal waters for more input, you could table the whole thing. But that's going to cause a delay because then they don't meet till the second Wednesday and then it's going to have to get back into your schedule.
Well, and they believe that it's, it's the point where it should be moving forward.
So what's? I, I sort of like Carter's suggestion, I mean, what's the, what's the downside to that?
I don't believe there's any harm that.
Cause the.
I'm aware of based upon what Mike said today. Jeff, you don't remember any additional conversation from the town attorney on that standard, correct?
Yeah, I, I like that, yeah, I think that's the simple way to do it is just leave it in the states.
Yep.
And then the, the definitions of project are still relevant for the other parts of the discussion. I do still think it's an interesting point to talk about the waterway at mean low tide.
Yeah, I do too.
Because I think, I mean, I'm a visual person, but here we go. I promise I'll hold it up. So if you have a channel like this and that, everybody's going to laugh at me.
It's often like that.
Yeah, right, so you have, so you've got, you've got your whole, your, you know, mean high tide to mean high tide. You've got halfway, you've got your quarter points and then you get your navigation channel off to one side, right? One person's float doesn't make it and then you could have a spot where maybe the navigation channel goes out and the other person's float could go.
Yeah.
You know, all the way across the channel to the other side. I mean, that just seems like common sense, like maybe that's not the way to do it.
Mean low water is the defining water, it's navigable.
Right, and channels move, you know, channels move.
Carolyn had the question about whether that's defined, whether that's something they can measure.
Right.
Is that going to become a problem?
Is that going to become a whole thing?
Sorry, I'm looking up one thing, I think you might be. Yeah, so I think you are actually maybe causing an issue by doing that, hold on. Because only tidal comes under coastal waters. Non tidal will come under the CEO or project review and that standard would apply to non tidal. So rather than delete it, I think if you don't want to get into it for tidal waters, I think because for the non tidal, they're going to cross reference. I think you should say, in non tidal waters, and then keep the sentence.
How much non tidal water do we have in Freeport we're putting docks on?
I haven't had any come to the project review board in my 20 years. I cannot speak on what the code officer has issued, I mean.
I don't even know where you'd.
Yeah, Florida Lake.
You can't.
We really, the town owns.
Town owns it, yeah.
I know, that's my, yeah, Frost Brook, no.
We've responded.
There you go.
Oh, yeah.
But you would be messing up that cross reference to these standards for the non titled by removing that.
I will be.
We, we just went, we just went from quarter, quarter of the way across back to the discussion about.
Oh, sorry, I was researching that, I didn't keep up.
Yeah.
I mean, this is.
So can we go back to, so, okay, so to go, to keep with Caroline's point for a minute, if we use Wayne's solution, does that solve our problem?
Yes. I don't know, I guess I'd call on Mike again, if we have a float in non tidal, is that limited to six feet?
I'm sorry, repeat that.
So I think the suggestion was that we remove the six foot width requirement, but these standards are cross reference for the non tidal that come under the purview of the project review board and the code enforcement officer. So in non tidal, can the float be more than six feet? Or is the float component in non tidal still limited to six feet?
Oh, in non tidal, I'm not, I'm not familiar with any particular temporary dock with a float system that would, or, or dock that would have a float system. So I'm personally not familiar with any situation where that might have come up. It's a great question.
I mean, I can't really.
Oh, boy, unfortunately, I don't have the DEP standard in front of me. But I, I, I think it's all going to depend on how they define, you know, pier, ramp, dock and that type of structure. It, it may be, it may fall into that same problem that, that the board has already discussed this evening and that is the float, you know, the way the language is written may, may fall into that just by, by default for no other reason, in, in non tidal waters and tidal waters.
Right, I think it would if they added non tidal at the front of that, but that's why I was asking the question. I didn't know what they thought it are. But again, I can't really think of a case where it might really be not relevant.
Right, so then do we just strike the whole cross reference too, I don't know?
Well, they're still going to have to comply with.
Right.
The DEP standards, I don't know, I mean, if we took it out, DEP would send it back to us and say, you're missing the standard.
Yeah, well, we don't want that.
Well, can we specify, can we specify that this? Can we specify, can we specify that this applies to only tidal?
In tidal areas.
Right.
Et cetera. Yeah.
In tidal areas except for the float portion of the project and then the rest.
Right, but then you need a standard for a non-tidal, then you'd want to put non-tidal. Non-tidal six feet.
But what if we don't?
All right. Here comes the fix.
Floats aren't all that could be wide. A six foot haulout width is not acceptable. Normally they're 10 to 12 feet wide to accommodate the float. So you're starting to, if you even though it's only eight inches wide and eight inches, but they're 10 to 12 feet wide, is that considered a six foot structure or two eight inch structures? So I'm, I'm advocating for haulouts and I'm not trying to get blocked out this early in the game. So striking it, having an open discussion about it would be good. If you're worried about inland in fresh waters, say fresh waters and not saltwater tidal areas. If, because that's what I'm hearing your concern is, is in ponds and freshwater area, six foot. Say that. Don't complicate freshwater with saltwater. They're two very different areas. And in the, I've noticed and haven't said anything, but there is some cross-reference in here, which is confusing from the coastal waters perspective, because inland is not coastal waters jurisdiction as far as I understand it. So there is throughout here other references, but I didn't see them as thing worthy of, of bringing up. So be clear on what you're, you're asking for inland or.
How would this even apply to inland water?
Well, typically it's in one ordinance, the shoreline zoning ordinance. So that one ordinance coming under one board. In this case, Freeport chose to pull that one issue to one board and then leave it partially with another board, which causes confusion. It's been that way for years.
I don't know. I'm just hearing a lot of things that I feel like, I know everyone wants to just get through this and, but like the, the questions that, um, Tim was mentioning of like, why are we even asking these things? I don't really feel like we have the technical expertise.
I was just going to say, I don't think I've ever felt so far over my head.
Yeah, I don't, I would, I don't think you guys can weigh in on that. Those aren't shoreline zoning. Those are coastal waters.
But there's enough things here that I'm like, I feel like it should probably go back to coastal waters.
We should be approving it after they've approved it, is what it seems like, right?
I just feel like there's more technical input needed that.
Yeah, so coast, like Jeff said, coastal waters has, in various boards and various compositions, has talked about some of these changes since 2008. They looked at the length standard, the chair and Jeff worked on these with the town attorney. And then we incorporated the mandatory shoreline zoning. So they definitely haven't seen the mandatory shoreline zoning. Um, they haven't seen the new width, but again, Jeff and Mark felt that this represented what coastal waters had talked about in their intent. I, I don't believe they looked at the whole ordinance and changing things like questions or submission or proof of postal or any of that stuff.
May I ask a process question? So what happens? Assuming we were to recommend going forward, could we recommend going forward, you know, pending their review? And, and when, when would the town council be expected to act on this?
So we did send this to Mark and Jeff. I don't, did this get shared with the committee? Do you know? This, did this version get shared with coastal waters that we had emailed out? Okay, um, so coastal waters could come tonight. They could also come in the council process. If you recommend it tonight, it will go to the council and get set for a hearing and probably in two weeks and then they'd have another hearing in two weeks. So about a month from now, it could get to council for a public hearing. You could choose to table it. It would go back to coastal waters. So it probably, it wouldn't be on time for their agenda. So it wouldn't get to coastal waters till probably June at, or May.
Was this brought to us because we've, is it, is it the board's view coastal waters that, listen, we've been working on this hard? This is where we're at right now. We feel like it is a good start. It's, it's going in the right direction. We would like you guys, you folks to kind of approve it and then we will continue this work, but we're on the right track. Is that, is that why it was brought to us at this time?
We wanted to be, uh, partners with the whole effort to get the shoreline zoning, in compliance. And yes, there does need to be some grooming of it. But, um, if we can move it forward and still be able to, you know, talk to the council, go to these other public hearings and the final product reflects some of these grooming efforts, I'm calling them, then I, I think we're better off moving it as a whole effort along with the other changes to shoreline zoning.
I was going to say, make a similar comment, that it seems to me to be more efficient, either using my suggestion or Carter's suggestion, either one. Let's flag these issues for the town council and then at least we've moved the process forward.
Right. I don't see why we would slow down the process.
Yeah, I think you could. I mean, it's a long process per your policy. You have to notify everyone in the shoreline zone anytime you look at standard that impacts them. Um, so Jeff and Mark were very great to make sure that we could send the whole package because there was substantial notification that Cecilia had to do to pull this meeting off.
Yeah.
So, but it's also important that you do it right and, and I don't want you to rush. You've done that before, you know, like when you sent, there was something you sent recently and you recommended it, but you flagged like, but you guys should consider design review. You know, I think if you wanted to forward it, you could, you know, forward it and you could flag, I think the hollow is my understanding that it has to meet setbacks per DEP, but I think you could flag that definitely between now and when it goes to council, we would have time to get DEP clarification. And if we get clarification and they say, we need it, we keep it. If we can strike it, we can strike it. Um, and then, you know, as long as a substantial change doesn't get made. If substantial changes are needed, it's going to have to come back to you through the whole process. I do think, I think the hollow, you could get some clarification on. I, it would be helpful if you kind of weighed in on the width thing and how you want to handle that, I think.
We can fix that pretty easily. It's really just the float issue. It's not the ramp and the pier issue. So we just have to figure some way to craft removing the float from the issue, whether it's striking that line or taking Wayne's approach to, you know.
Yeah, I think.
Change the project word or whatever it is.
I think Wayne's.
Yeah.
Approach works, right?
Well, weren't you saying Caroline that we'd have to put something in about tidal waters or non-tidal?
Yeah, I wouldn't want to see you, if you want to strike it, instead of striking it, just because it, like Mitch pointed out, it's kind of awkward because it's in the coastal waters, but if you do a dock and nine tidal, it references you to this section. So I think instead of totally striking it, if that was really what you wanted to do, instead of doing that, I would say in non-tidal waters and then leave the rest of it. Or if you want to address in tidal waters, you could go with Wayne's suggestion.
It has to list temporary and permanent floats, correct?
Nope. Oh, I think you could.
I, I thought we had permanent floats in itself. Freeport, that are greater than six feet.
I think you could either add in temporary and permanent or just strike the word temporary and then it would just apply.
Strike the word temporary.
I just want to cover the permanent floats.
Yeah, exactly. I don't want.
Yeah, we don't want those big guys to be in trouble.
Exactly.
Be non-conforming.
Yeah. Yeah. Well.
I look to you guys. You're the.
Yeah, yeah. I think, so I think what I'm hearing, I will try to summarize. What I'm hearing is we take effectively Wayne's approach, and leave the, uh, no, I lost my.
So Wayne's approach is that except for the float portion of a project.
You just add except for the float.
Yeah, Wayne's project is, is leaving exactly.
Leave it all alone and just say except for the float.
For non-commercial, no temporary project used for non-commercial use shall be wider than six feet.
But you don't want to specify that it, we're talking about tidal waters?
Um. I mean, it would apply.
Doesn't matter. It would apply to both. It, it seems like a moot point on freshwater, but just keep it in there. It doesn't matter, does it?
No.
I think it's a.
But you guys also want to strip the word temporary, correct?
Correct. Yes.
And then those questions about, this is, the, this application, that's your problem? So can we, can we say they'll, they'll rewrite their application or, you know?
They need to look at.
Review and approve and.
And I think the part that's flagged for council review is the haulouts.
Okay.
Yeah, I think.
And DEP.
Yeah, I think if you wanted to recommend it and move it forward, I would say, let's flag that and get some clarification.
Yeah.
From DEP and if the clarification, I think your motion could just say you support whatever the guidance from the main DEP is regarding the standard pertaining. I, I guess I'd cross-reference the.
The issues that are brought, that are brought up, maybe they go into four main groups. We have width of float. We have width of waterway. We have haulouts and we have sort of procedural stuff. So procedural stuff goes back to coastal waters. Haulouts gets flagged for DEP input. Uh, width of floats, we have our proposed thing. The one remaining one is the width of the waterway.
How, uh, that's define whether it's navigable or.
Right.
We all agreed navigable is better, except you had the concern that you couldn't measure it.
I guess I'll look to Jeff for guidance on that. Is.
I'd have to look that up.
So I think.
Common term.
I think we use the same approach that we use, um, to go to DEP and ask. See, see if there's a standard that we could refer to and flag it for council.
That's a Freeport standard. Freeport is going above and being more restrictive. So I don't think DEP is going to weigh in on that because that's our special.
What about the attorney? Could we get a, could we, could we ask the attorney for her?
This is the version from the attorney. We had mean high water. We had, there was a couple of different things and this is what.
But it had to do with enforcement, right? And it, it had to do with what you could or couldn't measure.
Yeah, yeah, being able to measure it and enforce it.
So, but I, but what I'm hearing from the board is we think that there's a better way and not just the board. I think public too. Um, I feel like we got a comment that, that there's a better way than just one quarter of the way between.
Well, I think Tim mentioned that we, we refer to navigable waters in some portions of it and others we say.
Well, everybody agrees that that's better as long as it's measurable.
Yeah. And.
Is that right?
So we need to find, I think we need to find somebody who can say whether or not there is a standard out there that is measurable, that is different than hat. Like, can we use a low water and define it in a way that's enforceable? I think that's really the question because at low water, like the low water defines the navigable channel, right? Where there's water at low tide, that's, that's the channel.
And of course, there's a definition for navigable. Can you put a boat through there at low water?
Right.
Yeah.
And what's the definition of boat? A canoe?
Yeah, I was just going to say, yeah, something that draws an inch and a half.
It gets pretty.
But it's still navigable. Navigable is a word that's definable.
Yeah.
You know?
Yeah, I mean, I think it could meet different things to different people.
You think it could mean different things?
But, but if you have a float out, you know, if you, if you have a float out for a kayak and a canoe, uh, as long as it's navigable for you, it's navigable. So if your purpose for your float is to put your kayak on so you can launch without dragging across the mud flats, then that works for you.
But I think.
Yeah.
It's for other people.
Yeah, the issue is how do you not block? So you, you have a big boat and you're going to block a small boat.
That's right.
And I think the issue for enforcement is that, you know, you've got, how do you, like, like, annual high tide is a surveyable like pin. It is right there.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So Carter, do you have a golden, uh?
Half tide.
Silver, silver.
Half tide. You can't, at low tide, you can't go there. High tide, you can't get there sometimes. Half tide is should, is, is a measurable point.
That's true.
That you can go from point to point. Your meadow, your meadow bank that you're talking about starts at one foot elevation. Half tide is zero foot elevation and runs up to three foot elevation. High tide, mean high water is in around the four foot elevation. Zero elevation being half tide is a measurable point that gets rid of your extremes of where's this point? You can always find half tide. If you use that as your measurable point, you have a, a, a point to point that can hopefully be understood and measured too. I can sit at the side of the water and wait for my clock to say it's half tide, put a stick in the mud, I can measure it. So half tide is a measurable point.
That was problematic when we talked with the Mark and Jeff and the town attorney that we, we debated quite a bit is half tide, a point in time, is there an elevation? And if it's something we want enforceable, if it's a point in time during the day, I mean, if there's an issue, we're going to have to ask the code enforcement officer to go down there at 12 o'clock on a Wednesday and catch half tide. It's just really not practical and not easy to measure.
Tied, right? I mean.
Half tide is the sum total of all mean tides. And, huh, because if you have, a half is a half. No matter what size the unit is, it's half of it. And they all come to average to the same point.
I mean, the idea is to, to figure out, um, a methodology of, of confirming something. This, this seems like a good route. It's not really conducive to having him wait. But how often is he going to have to do this? I mean, is it maybe once a year the most?
Well, clearly if they're putting a standard and it's something they're concerned about, we never want to create standards that aren't enforceable. I mean, if it needs to be worked through more, then you could send it back to coastal waters to work through as a committee. Because although Jeff and Mark thought it meant the intent, they haven't gone.
You guys should say how far out it could go.
Say how far.
How far out, the, the issue is how far out it goes. And the dock and the, the dock, the float, whatever it is, and where are you going to measure it?
But I.
Well, they did.
So just for this discussion, I'll say I'm completely in agreement with what Carter says. If you measure half tide, it's going to be in the same place all the time. And, uh, and that's something, you know, Nick could do very rarely. And we could ask the builder to demonstrate with a sidewalk, you know, where half tide is. Put a stick right there and tell us where it is. It's, it's just not a, it's not a measurement that most people think of.
Then how far, so now you know where half tide is. So now how far out does it go?
Well, it, it can't take more than.
A quarter.
A quarter of the space.
Of what's left.
Of what's left.
Between.
Of what's left between the two banks at halftime.
That's right.
Okay.
So you got a channel, you might mean half tide on both sides and you, you take a quarter of it.
That makes sense to me.
I think it makes sense. I think it's, yeah. I, I think the, the, the crux of it is we can all sit here and say, yeah, that makes perfect sense about what is half tide. But if, if your neighbor builds something and you say, well, I think it should have been five feet further that way, can somebody in a court say what, you know, is it enforceable? Is, what, is there an agreement, sort of a broader than this room and a common sense agreement? Is there an understood definition of what half tide is? And it sounds like the attorney looked into this and said, no.
I think when we debated it, it, it was not clear and there were enforcement concerns.
What's the main takeaway? What's the, the negative on the current wording? Like the, I'm sorry that I'm.
Just that you could have, well, you could have like, you know, here's your, here's your sort of high water to high water. You could have the channel go way over here. This person can build their dock, you know, out over the channel and this person can't even come in.
The channel is not necessarily halfway between the two banks. That's the problem.
So I think it's trying to, yeah. I mean, I recognize we've now spent an hour.
Sorry, I'm having some, uh, computer issues here, but you do have a hand up from Mike. Do you want to hear from?
Yes, definitely hear from Mike.
Okay, Mike, you're good to go.
All right. Thank you. And I'm sorry to interject here, uh, but I, when I've worked with municipalities in the past and I've seen towns struggling with trying to develop certain unique language that's not in the state's, um, chapter 1,000 rules, for instance. But there is another standard already in place that's going to be a, a limiting factor. I asked the question of, of planning board or the town. Are you spinning gears, um, trying to come up with a new standard when there is already another standard in place? In this case, the Army Corps of Engineer, engineers' standards say you're, I, I texted Caroline earlier, the language, but it's something like, uh, the structure cannot extend more than 25% across the channel, um, at mean low water or something to that effect. So if the town of Freeport opts to just keep the hundred, 125 foot length limit, it, it really doesn't matter where that 125 feet falls. If, if the 125 feet would take a structure three quarters of the way across a low navigable water channel, the Army Corps of Language is going to prohibit it anyway. So I wonder if you may already have non-town of Freeport language that's already beneficial for what you're trying to accomplish. It's just another perspective to consider.
No, I mean, I think that makes total sense.
But does Army Corps come into title?
Yeah.
Temporary and permanent?
Title, yes. Temporary, permanent, all the above.
Okay. So I think the one thing about having it in here is that it gives, it clarifies that when people come in, but I think it gives us municipal enforcement.
So can we, can we strike the, the one that's in here and specifically reference the Army Corps standard?
And also meet the Army Corps standard.
Is that?
Well, that sounds a lot more simple.
What?
I said, that sounds a lot more simple.
I mean, they've already identified the.
Then you don't have to worry about any of it.
It's sort of like taking, making the map references the state, you know?
Well, also, you know, like Mike mentioned, what you don't wanna do is, is have some, you know, threshold to meet and then you meet it and then the Army Corps engineer says, oops, sorry.
Yeah, right.
You can't. And like, oh, wait, the town said.
Yeah, I think that, I think that's the, that's, that's a great.
I think.
I just, I didn't realize that the Army Corps had that jurisdiction.
Putting it in the ordinance though, would give that added protection. If this is what Coastal Waters wants and the objective, like if you put the language in here other than a generic reference, although I like that much, but it's really easier.
Yeah.
But if Army Corps then changes their standard, our standard on the books is still in place.
Could we copy the text of the Army Corps reference?
Yeah, that's why.
Yeah, Mike, could you pull that up again? Sorry, I just need a second to turn to the page.
So we're effectively taking the Army Corps standard and putting it in a time capsule so it can't, if they change it, ours doesn't change.
So do we know what to do?
I feel more confused.
Um, yeah, we're letting.
Are we still in a public hearing? We're still in a public.
Yeah, we're still in a public hearing.
Yeah, you could close the public hearing if you're done or if you wanna hear that.
I mean, we still have the members of public. Was Mike pulling something up? Sorry, I thought.
Yeah, Mike, sorry, I'm just organizing my sheets here. I should probably mute, but yeah, Mike is.
Okay, but I think is that, so that was the final one of the four sort of pillars of discussion that we identified here. So I think if we can move forward with adding the reference from the Army Corps to the document and then flagging, yeah, whatever, we've already said the other stuff.
Has somebody caught all that? The four items?
Public record.
We're gonna, we're gonna review it before you make a.
To watch this meeting again.
A motion, so.
Do I hear a motion to close the public hearing? And a second. Andy and others, all in favor? Okay, the public hearing is now closed. Somebody's gonna have the fun job of making a motion to.
Why are you looking at me?
I, no idea, Robert.
So Mike, do you, do you have, were you able to pull up that language that you could read back?
I got a pass.
Are you still, okay.
I've, I've got it. It's, it's on the, on the Army Corps'. Let me, let me go back to the title here. It's on page 29 of their standards and it says, no structure extends across greater than 25% of the waterway width at mean low water. And it's under their structures, floats and lifts language. And this is, uh, bear with me just a sec here.
Do you, is it something you could screen share?
Oh, uh, I might be able to do that.
If you do the screen share at the bottom?
Sure. Uh, let's see.
I mean, it still doesn't clarify the two points that you're measuring.
It says mean low water.
I don't know.
All right.
Can you see the screen? I mean, that's, that's as good as, it's, it's gonna be narrower. It's gonna be narrower, but it, it's the same thing. It's gonna be a quarter of that or a quarter of that. It probably will get you to about the same place.
It's a known definition.
It's a known, yeah.
So here's a stupid question. If there's no water at low tide like at Porter's Landing, then no structure is allowed. Is that correct?
I'll refer to Jeff for the impacts of this.
No, cause I think then you go back to.
If there's no mean low water.
Then there's no quarter to measure.
And there's no.
So then you're, you fall under the 125.
125 feet.
Yeah.
There's no navigable channel if there's no water there.
Right, so there's nothing to protect.
But at high tide.
There's no reason that there would be a.
A flow.
You, you wouldn't be blocking anything, except you could block navigable water at not, at, at.
At high tide.
At high tide.
That's why you gotta.
That's not good neither. That's the advantage to the half tide.
What about a quarter, a quarter of the way across at mean low or a quarter of the way across at mean high, whichever is closer to your bank?
Could work.
Whichever is more restrictive.
Okay, I.
I'm confused how we're the ones that are forming this.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
You know, this is not my purview.
So this is what you would have, which this, I feel like it's, there's something missing, but I'll read it to you. So from what Mike had pulled up and what we have in front of us, the total length of a project from the highest annual tideline shall not exceed 125 feet. That's current standard.
Yep.
In no part of the project, you know, walkway, dock, wharf platform, ramp or float may extend more than one-fourth of the way across the width of a water body or wetland at mean low water.
That's the Army Corps, apparently, the Army Corps standard.
Right, so my, I don't feel like, I don't know that we're getting it right because at mean low wa, you're saying at mean low water, but you still don't have the measuring points in this language, if that makes sense.
The intention is trying to go bank to bank when it gets narrow.
Right.
Right, but you need that where on the bank.
Point to when, okay, you can't go anymore.
Seems like we're trying to craft a better definition, the Army Corps of Engineers, which seems.
I've had that thought.
Not great.
Why does that work?
Mike, does the Army Corps of Engineer clarify what they determine a waterway width to mean?
Well, I mean, they utilize that, I don't know if you can see the screen, but.
Yeah, we can.
They, uh, and I think the waterway width is just the width on both sides of a, of a channel as measured from mean low water line.
And. But if there is no channel.
And so if there is no water at low tide, then what?
You, you would have a width of zero, I guess is how you'd look at that. You, you don't have a navigable channel at that point.
Right. So then what are you measuring?
Yeah, so what are you measuring? So how far out can we go?
So how do we, how do we advance this without, without trying to?
That's the key. How do we move this forward but not screw it up?
Get Coastal Waters to review.
Yeah, get Coastal, that's right.
Yep. I mean, maybe we just go, maybe we just go with the, the recommendation of quarter of the way across. I mean, I, I think it, it is, I, I think, I think it was Tim, right, who made the point that it could result in some odd situations, but maybe it's more restrictive than the 125 feet.
It isn't more restrictive.
It could be. I mean, or, or there's no, I mean, the 125.
Totally block the channel.
Hold on, hold on. We gotta, we gotta rein in the discussion here a little bit. So there's, the 125 feet is always the maximum, right? So at no point can you have a dock or a project that is longer than 125 feet. There are situations in which you are restricted by the quarter of, you know, quarter distance across from mean high. So I, yeah, I mean, I, I see that, after all of that, I think we can see how this is a, this is a difficult, a difficult one and we may, you know, it, it does seem, it does seem like that's actually, you guys probably got as close as, is reasonable. So.
And the 125 length on the books today is already measured from the highest annual tide.
Right. And so then if there are situations in which the, the one quarter is more restrictive than that 125, then it's more restrictive.
I'll readily admit that I don't know a whole lot about this and I'm willing to accept the proposed amendment, having faith that those folks are the ones that know this a lot better than I do.
Yep, so I think we, I think we're, I think we've spun our wheels enough. I think we, we took a, we took a public comment that I think was a good, a good comment and we tried to make it better and it's more complicated than we realized. And now we realize it, so let's move it forward. Does that seem reasonable to everybody?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so.
We can propose the language about the.
Yes, the other stuff. Yeah, the other stuff, absolutely. Yep.
So for coastal waters amendments, you have the two changes that were given to you tonight, just to note the permanent application, that all of the things of the project are considered structures. You have changing water frontage to shore frontage where it says in Freeport, you need 60 feet. You are going to change based upon Jeff's recommendation on page 20 regarding the certified letters, just to say, proof that certifies letters have been sent to a butters within 250 feet of the proposed project. That wording does not specify what that proof is. We hear from Jeff that they're being pretty lenient in taking a photocopy now. I think if you wanna require anything specific that was mentioned, then we'd look to Jeff for.
Back to.
Tim, Tim suggesting remove the word certified. That's what I think he was saying was that you don't need to have certified letters. You just need to have proof of mail.
I, oh.
A certificate of mailing is different than a certified letter.
But I think that's all procedural, like that needs to go back to.
What's outside of that.
Okay, so the, the proof will reflect current practice, correct, Jeff? And then on page 21, except for the float part of a project, any project used for non-commercial uses shall be wider than six feet.
Shall not.
Okay. Shall not, yeah, you're right, shall not. And then do you wanna put, except for the float portion of a project, any project.
Oh, I see, sorry, yeah, no temporary project used, shall be wider than, that's right. Shall be wider than six feet.
And then we're not going to acknowledge title or non-title unless it's called out by DEP, unless we accidentally alter that in a way that's not compliant.
Yes. That was, that was the thing we were gonna flag on that, right? For the town council to look at?
Yeah, for DEP's input.
Oh, do you want DEP's input on that to make sure that's?
Might as well do that and then you could flag the result of that to the town council.
Float portion of a project, any project used for non-commercial uses shall not be wider than six feet. Is that what you want? Is there anything that's missing that we talked about? I'm looking at Jeff and you guys.
My eyes are kind of glazing over this.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We've all gotten there. We may have gotten there in half an hour ago.
I was there, yeah.
You know, I think, I, I will say, it was, it's a really good discussion. We had a really good lengthy discussion, very similar with the town attorney, staff, representatives from Coastal Waters going around and round. They did even talk about additional restrictions and I will say, correct me if you don't agree, but we need to start somewhere and we felt like this was a starting point.
I think that's, yep.
In that we could potentially need to tweak it or add to it because you know another concern that they want, which wasn't before you tonight, but they don't want all these floats just sitting on the mud flats either. So you might see that in the future, but.
No, I think that's.
It was getting really.
Right, I always think of, you know, by the, there's a, that dip in Falmouth on the Falmouth Four side.
Yeah, they pull them all up in the cove.
Yeah, the cove just has like 30 floats in it in the winter.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You do 88.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then you're going to flag or advise that staff get in from DEP regarding the width of the projects and the hollow provision regarding storage.
Yep, good call. I forgot about that.
Now with that zone change, we made sure that temp, the commercial guys didn't have a problem with their floats.
Correct.
That standard's non-commercial.
Yep.
The standard you guys were talking about tonight.
So we don't have to worry about commercial guys? Is they're not affected by this or? Include them in the six foot, more than six foot for the float?
I'm not, I, I can't weigh in on that unless Mike is still here. Mike, does DEP regulate commercial and non-commercial pier stocks, wharfs separate differently in tidal waters?
They do, they do. Not, uh, commercial are not regulated or restricted at width or length like some of the residential docks or piers are, floats.
Okay, so we're better to keep that non-commercial so that we don't restrict them? Unless you wanna restrict.
No, we don't.
That would be terrible.
Yeah.
Which makes sense that they can go wider because if they're water users, they're gonna need that.
They're paying for it.
All right.
I'm glad I read a proposed motion, so I'm not.
That's definitely not how it works.
I can try it and just include the revised language for this one.
Um, you have, you have three revisions. You have revision, original document, you have the revisions presented by staff at the meeting.
Yep.
The provision regarding the mailing and the provision regarding the length of the pier.
I thought, could I lump them all under as procedurals, like the questions asked in the applications in addition to the mailing? Or do I need to individually list those?
I know, I think as long as you kind of somehow flag them so that it can show on the record that you talked about those things and added them at the meeting.
Okay.
So that it's clear and then I think you just wanna add on to the end that you forward this with the recommendation that before the council hearing, staff check with the, or get input, guidance, whatever, from DEP regarding the widths of project components, I guess we'll call it, and the hollow provisions regarding storage and adjust the language as needed. And then if something substantial comes out of that, or Jeff, when he goes back to Coastal Waters, if something substantial comes out, you know, we would advise the council to table it and send it back to the planning board.
I'm not so sure I can do this now.
Do you want me to wing it and then you can do some?
That sounds good.
Okay. All right, now, I wasn't planning on doing it, so give me a minute.
Wait, are you allowed to make motions?
I can read it and then you guys can move and second it. I'm not gonna start making motions, I'm getting that on.
We're like, what?
Oh, this is a game changer. Yeah, okay, I know, great.
I don't think it's our preferred practice, but I could make the motion.
Yeah, sounds good.
In this situation. In this situation.
In this situation, in this one case at nine o'clock, cause everyone's eyes are blazing over.
I move to deputize Carolyn.
Okay, somebody talk while I do this.
You're doing a great job.
Do we just skip over to persons wishing to address on non-agenda items?
No, cause then you'll have to vote to take.
I, I wanna just say something is that, um, you know, I didn't know Greg Savona really well, but every time I'm gonna come in this meeting room, I'm gonna be thinking about him. And I don't know if we can start the meetings or in the meeting with just a few, like, a minute of silence. I just, I think it's really nice and especially when we get into like the minutia of planning board, it really helps me to remember the big picture and all the people who have been before us.
Yes.
Crossed my mind too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I feel like.
We talked about when we saw his name on the December 1.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I just think it, it'd be nice to just continue with that if there, if, Sam, if there's a way we could just start the meeting. Doesn't always have to be, you know, said of Greg's name, but just like if we could start the meeting with a minute of silence or something like that or end, maybe beginning is better, cause everyone's not exhausted.
Yeah, I think that's a good, a good idea. So I think especially we're, yeah, in the case of Greg and, um, we certainly, certainly, uh, really appreciate new perspectives on the board and, and I think we will also miss, uh, miss the perspectives of people who, who have been here for a while. So, yeah, I think it's, I think it's a good way to remember.
Okay, it was the two text changes in the amendments presented, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so the motion that somebody could move would be, be it ordered that the Freeport Planning Board recommends to the Freeport Town Council the adoption of proposed amendments to the town of Freeport Coastal Water, Waters Ordinance, chapter 31, as discussed and presented at the 4/6/22 planning board meeting with amendments presented by staff and amendments pertaining to the width of projects and proof of certified mailing to amend sections of the ordinance to make them consistent with the minimum requirements of the State of Maine Mandatory Shoreland Zoning Act and that the proposal is consistent with the town comprehensive plan vision that Freeport will be responsible stewards of the environment by protecting environmentally sensitive areas. The planning board provides further guidance that staff check with DEP regarding the language of the width of projects and hollow provisions regarding storage and adjust the language as needed.
I second that.
You first.
You so moved.
So moved.
So here's a second.
Second.
From Anna. All in favor? All right. Final agenda item of the night, I forgot, I think it's seven, right? Uh, or six, whatever. Persons wishing to address the board on non-agenda items, I warn you, the chances of us taking them up are not great. Great. Final item, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
And a second.
Second.
All in favor? All right, great.
And now we're done. I just wanna thank you, Jeff, for coming on behalf of Coastal Waters and helping us work through the ordinance and bring it forward on your behalf and get it into compliance.
It's a pretty complicated, uh.
Yeah, sorry we kept you here so late.
There's a lot to it.
And Mike, thank you also for coming.
And Carter, appreciate your input.
Oh, you're very welcome, thank you. Appreciate it.
Good meeting you.
Nice to meet you, sir.